We'll start with an agenda check. Any changes or comments on the agenda? Go, all right. Before we go further, actually, I'll give a quick facility and safety awareness briefing. So this is for everybody, those of you who are joining us for in public as well as staff commissioners. Thank you all for joining us tonight. E web management and subject matter experts are present in the room and virtually, and this meeting is being live streamed and recorded. Please speak loudly and clearly so everyone can hear you. I know that applies to us up front here especially that we need to clear. Public testimony is welcome. Sign up forms are available at the back of the room. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to sign up already. We have a public input time scheduled in about 20 minutes. Visitor access is limited to the board meeting room and restrooms. Restrooms, if you need them, are located on the first floor. Exit through the interior door over here in the corner in the back of the room, and a security officer can direct you to the restroom. In the event of emergency, such as a fire or a security incident, please follow all instructions given by staff. If we need to evacuate this room, please proceed to the nearest safe exit as directed by staff and evacuate away from the building of the building to the farthest points in the parking lots to allow access for first responders. Right with that, we'll go to items from board members and general manager.
I attend, so Sonia Carlson, I attended the El Cobb dinner. It was lovely event and represented the El Cobb. So hopefully see others in the future. We just recognize some really wonderful people in the community, and it's a great way to celebrate a lot of the work that are that there's we're doing regionally.
Yeah, two things. I attended an event with, I think, a lot of food at that position, but it was very informative. They had more questions if we get answers. And then I noticed that at least some of my people in my words have been having trouble communicating with E web and whether or not it's just an isolated incident or others are having that, but they're getting challenged. I know Ann and Paulie have been on it, but I just wondered if that's an anomaly or if we have a system issue with it because I want to make you have an open, wide communication to that group of people. So if you could kind of check on that, I appreciate it.
John Brodsky, Commissioner. I had attended the McKenzie Watershed Council meeting this one that was kind of a business type meeting. We were going through bylaws and governance of the of the thing. So it was a very dry meeting for a watershed council, but still a good group attending.
General Manager, you?
Not on the general items. I'll follow up on correspondence here in a moment.
All right. Correspondence then.
Oh, yeah, we'll move right to it. Commissioners, there were four items of correspondence, two related to our present status and how we approach wholesale power markets. The first one was a general update of tech trends in the marketplace, how E web approaches that. The second one had to do with very specifically how we approach board policy SD 15 and our power trading compliance work that is adhering to that policy. If you read those, they're very meaty, to say the least. And I would like to propose to the board that we potentially take either part of a meeting or work session sometime mid-year to dive into the power markets a little bit deeper as they relate to E web's future position as an electric utility and how we want to approach and position ourselves for that. This was, this was a bit of a, of a deep and a deep dive into certain topics. And so if the board is agreeable to that, we can work on scheduling that for later.
That's a question about that. I don't think we got a memo about them not generating any more electricity from the Willamette, the Willamette Nation dams like Cougar, Detroit, Green Peter and Lookout. And then it's like 13 dams are going to stop generating electricity. And so we'll lose that hydro. Is that going to have a direct effect on us?
The, the direct effect would be via Bonneville. Those are part of the Bonneville system. Okay, now, there's, there's two things that weigh into that. One of them is that those particular facilities are, are very expensive facilities. And one of the issues is how the expense is allocated, how much of that goes to hydro versus flood control and other, other purposes. That's part of the conversation. And Bonneville's in the midst of talking with the Corps and others about either how those costs will be allocated or whether to decommission the electric generation. Portion of that, if we felt like it was an unfair allocation of costs. So, so it's an indirect impact. There are also a fairly small percentage of Bonneville's overall generating capability.
And Sonia's interested, I'm interested as well. So it sounds like yes, please.
Okay, we'll work on that scheduling. The other two items, the other two items, one was the legislative update from Jason Huser, kind of summarizing the end of the short session of which he reported on in some general sense last month. This was more capturing of the, of that for the record. And then they Willamette River Second Source Project update. There'll be more discussion on that as we talk about capital planning in the, within the June frame. So that was a general update based on the position and direction that the board provided in 2021 to the organization. And so there are some if commissioners have questions, we'd be happy to dive into those further. Otherwise, at least two of these will have further discussion in upcoming months.
Great, thanks, Brodsky.
Yeah, I just wanted to to thank that Megan, John, I did read them. So they go out and actually get read at Deborah. I read most of yours, but not everyone. A lot of the ones that said compliant, I said, okay, that's a check mark. But I appreciate this. I think that, you know, I look forward to the work session because hedging and how we, how we buy and sell power is something that we're going to be having to look at in the future as to what our role is in that. You know, in the past, we've all, we've done it one way, and I think that markets and things are trending a little bit different. So I think it's an appropriate time to start looking at those. But it was interesting reports. Thanks for putting them together.
Thank you. All right, going to the next item, which is public input. And I'm going to very briefly give a overview just for pressure for everybody here. And then then dive into it. So welcome to the public input session for this meeting. This portion of the agenda is dedicated to providing thirty members an opportunity to address the board about any topic or issue. We respectfully request all speakers adhere to E web's public input instructions and code of conduct that are providing during the signup to speak process. We have fourteen folks who are signed up today. We have time set aside. We added a little time so that we could make room for, because we figured there would be testimony. But we do want to ask you all to please adhere to three minutes, just so maybe we can make sure everybody has an equal amount of time. There's a clock up front that will help you with that. I will respectfully, but really stop you if you start to go over. So please help us by, by trying to wrap up in time. Once your name is called, you'll have three minutes. The public input session is now open. We'll begin with the folks on, who are joining us by phone, followed by the folks here in person. We'll start with Kathy Geng, followed by David McNeil. Kathy, are you on?
Yes. This is Kathy Geng, and I'm going to say that at E web's 2010 annual retreat, John Brown remarked during the smart meter talk, I expect some resistance from Eugene rate payers. He got that right, as this is an intelligent and informed community on many topics. AMI trajectory has been circuitous. Folks now question if it is true, as a former E web staff informed a rate payer, E web only has enough pulse to service a third of its customers. Is poor planning a reason for recent unprecedented mandatory digital meter installs usurping our rights to health preservation, privacy, security from hacking, fires and explosions? Please answer today. Two, GM Lawson, in remarks about himself at a public meeting boasted E web differs from private IOU utilities, that they interact less with people than public beyond utilities like E web do. Yet California is one of seven states dominated by IOUs utilities, by the way, with a robust opt out program that is a true opt out program. And about 50% of utilities do offer the opt out, by the way. Now, per the two, number three, per 2023 smart meter study by OSU Corvallis Engineering Department, hacking of between 2.8% and 8% of meters can provide an interruption through an oscillation disturbance in the power lines. So he's, they say that these AMI improvements introduce new dimensions to attack the power grid. One of these consists in hacking AMI to control smart meter switches by altering the data or inserting false control data. With increased smart meter deployment, it becomes more likely to experience cybersecurity breaches. And finally, I've been in communication with an engineer who worked for 30 years for the military in a civilian capacity, and she specialized in sensors and satellites and everything in between regarding RF. She is prominently involved in the Virginia Organization Against Smart Meters, and she advises you to correct your course. She says that the system engineering analysis has not been done sufficiently in people's homes and the whole system. And I've already sent you a couple of reports. She provided me reliable information about fires and explosions. Thank you for changing your course, and we appreciate your public service.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, David McNeil is not available, so we're going to go to Cassandra Basalto. Basalto. Cassandra, are you on?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Cassandra Basalto, and I'm actually a resident of Springfield, and I'm just commenting today about the College Hill reservoir and the public land usage comments and ideas. And I just would like that area to be used kind of as like an open space still, since people did really like it being so open. And I would like to suggest also keeping the children in mind. I have a family with five children, and we love going on walks through there. And so maybe incorporate something specifically for the children. Also, like a designated, clearly marked path would be great, and if that could be accessible for everybody. Also, lighting would be awesome as well. I do have a question and don't know if it's going to be answered in the future, but to my understanding, the people of, the people who pay E web are going to like see an increase on their bills once the plan is set in place. And I was wondering if you guys could possibly make it available, like, so like, to kind of let people know how much things would cost and how their rates would change once they start working on the public land usage part of College Hill. And yeah, thank you. Have a great day.
Great, thank you, Cassandra. And for Cassandra and all of you here, by policy, we don't engage in a back and forth during this part of the meeting. But there is an update on the College Hill reservoir later in the meeting, and it's possible that question will be addressed. So moving to the folks who are here with us in the meeting room, we're going to go next to Joshua Korn, followed by Becky Bruckner.
We're, we're reading a sequence letter for the record. Smart meter opt out programs exist because there are issues with these devices. We are going to demonstrate why your opt out program needs immediate revision, especially to meet the needs of your most vulnerable customers. Number one, smart meter opt out, genuine versus fake. Opt out means to choose not to participate in something. Smart meter opt out is commonly understood to mean the right of account holders to refuse the installation of smart meters, keeping their analog meters and revert to analog meters if smart meters were installed. If so defined in E web's, it was so defined in E web's statement of, of principles for the advanced metering project, AMI. Your decision to change the definition of opt out to smart meter with radio off is, one, actually a pseudo opt out, and, two, out of step with other utility companies that provide genuine opt out programs. E web's opt out program is a sham because smart meters with the radio off are causing the same types of health and safety problems as radio on meters. E web customers are, were taken by surprise when informed about the change to a new definition of opt out. As elected officials, you are ethically bound to be open, honest and transparent in your decision making, per the Oregon Government Ethics Commission Code of Conduct. Question number one, what was E web's public process for changing what opt out means? And how was this honest, open and transparent? Number two, dirty electricity, whether the radio is on or off. E web's assertion about safety about smart meters with the radio off is strongly contradicted by evidence from independent scientists and doctors, and also by the fact that they are making people sick. In one case, the Nevada Customer Protection Bureau reached an agreement with the Nevada Public Utilities Commission to allow individuals to keep their analog meters in part because of health problems associated with the dirty electricity created by switch mode power supplies in smart meters. Question two, if dirty electricity from these device, the devices is of little importance, as you claim, then why are so many independent experts, such as the Building Biology Institute and National Institutes of Building Sciences, saying dirty electricity is an issue? And why are so many people getting sick from smart meters, whether the radio is on or off?
Next is Becky.
Becky Bruckner, Ward three. Point number three, invalid claims of smart meter safety. E web has been presented repeatedly with evidence that smart meters are not safe, and yet you continue to claim that they are. E web cites the FCC as the standard by which its decisions have been made. However, in 2021, the U.S. Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia Circuit ruled the FCC failed to acknowledge evidence of negative health effects, effects when it decided that its 1996 radio frequency emissions guidelines protect the public's health. Environmental Health Trust has stated utility companies claim that smart meters and their networks meet government FCC limits. However, 20 year old FCC limits based on 30 year old science are not protective of human health and are hundreds of thousands of times too high to protect humans and wildlife from biological effects. E web also cites the World Health Organization as a source. However, the WHO's International Agency for Research on Cancer classifies radio frequency radiation as a class 2B carcinogen. A cost cannot be placed on health and safety, and there is no financial justification for compromising either one. Number four, E web's broken contracts and intimidation of customers. E web has promised to prioritize customer safety, but evidence previously and repeated, repeatedly provided demonstrates this is not the case. E web has promised to treat customers respectfully and to enable customers to make the right choices for themselves. Yet E web is threatening people with service disconnection if they don't accept a smart meter put on their home, a place where they have a fundamental right to protect their health and safety. Question three, how does bullying customers to accept a product they do not want constitute respect or enable them to make the right choice for themselves?
This is Dennis Horner.
Hi, I'm Dennis Horner from Ward three, and continuing this letter. Item number five, principles and ethics demand a genuine smart meter opt out option. The precautionary principle and ethics demand that you allow customers to refuse meters causing verifiable harms. To reflect, to frame retaining or installing analog meters as being too costly or in any other way denying customers the ability to protect their fundamental rights to safety for any reason is simply unjustifiable. Number six, E web's burden of proof and responsibilities. E web bears the burden of proof that you commissioners are providing safe service via your meter policy. You have been presented with information and asked a number of questions. The questions are not rhetorical, and it is your responsibility to answer them satisfactorily. As we have demonstrated, your opt out program needs immediate revision and is out of step with other utility companies, but approximately 50% across the country do not require smart meters. Your policy must offer a genuine opt out for customers specifying that they may retain or revert to an analog meter and backed up with a permanent guarantee of that choice. You are liable for your failure to do so. We wait your reply. There are many people who share these concerns and have come together in an informal group because we care about our lives. I had a scalp melanoma, and I do not want to have radiation pouring into my bedroom at night. So I'm bathed eight hours a night, even with the radio off option that, that you call an option. The, there is significant RF. All RF has a biological effect on the body. And I want, I do not want that for myself. I do not want that for anyone in this room. I do not want it for the citizens of Eugene. And I appreciate all of your work that you do. I think you're completely wrong with this policy, and I urge you to listen and to revise. Give us an option, a genuine option.
Yes, next is Mark Burwood, being moved by Allison Price.
What I'm reading is a notice before legal action.
Louder.
Louder.
Louder, yeah.
Okay, I'm reading a notice before legal action to the E web board commissioners. This will also be a document read by several people. E web stated in its promises to customers on February 1st, 2024, promises their contracts with us. This letter outlines how the commissioners are breaking these promises and incurring liability. E web's first promise, the right to safety, privacy and data security. Section one, E web will perform its activities in a manner that prioritizes customer safety and demonstrates sensitivity and responsiveness to environmental concerns. Radiation pollution isn't environmental concern. So called smart meters emit RF and EMF radiation that endangers the safety of customers and wildlife. That danger extends beyond customers' homes to neighbors' homes as well. Impartial scientists and health experts consistently demonstrate these dangers. Between 2011, 2013, almost 100 customers provided evidence to about customer safety, environmental concerns related to smart meters. Local public interest group Families for Safe Technology brought in national, international public health experts, providing concise summaries of scientific smart meter research, as well as access to experts to consult with the board. After being presented with such extensive evidence, the E web Board of Commissioners, as well as the mayor and city council of Eugene, agreed that the customer safety concerns should, should receive priority. This board in 2013 demonstrating sensitivity and responsiveness enacted, enacted principles to prioritize customer safety and required that the general manager develop policies guided by these principles. But in February of 2018, after the appointment of a new general manager, a full reverse of policy occurred without transparent disclosure of the decision making process. Carefully negotiated agreements with customers were abandoned without cause or comment. The Oregon Government Ethics Commission requires that you, as public officials, quote, behave in an open, honest and transparent manner. Those requirements are being violated. At the meeting where an updated metering policy was authorized, the board voted unanimously to uphold the statement of principles of the 2013 decision and required new policies, that new policies conform with them. Those principles included the rights of customers to refuse the installation of smart meters, keep their analog meters, or revert back to analog if smart meters had already been installed. It would, it would also protect the customers from utility policy mandates.
This is Allison Price, followed by Sabrina Segal.
Allison Price, Ward one. Yeah, the following month of March 2018, the general manager presented the board with a new set of policies. One commissioner asked the general manager if the guiding principles established in 2013 and reaffirmed the month before had been rescinded. The general manager applied that they had. Having self determined that the general manager and his staff self determined that they were not bound to the board's decisions, they rescinded them and generated new policy in contempt of the board's decisions. Your oaths of office, your oaths of office. State you will faithfully perform the duties of Eugene Water and Electric Board Commissioners for the City of Eugene. Your published promises to customers are contracts with us, as are the guiding principles of advanced metering project. By failing to supervise your employees and uphold all customer contracts, including those related to public safety and environmental concerns, you have failed to faithfully perform the management duties in your office or of your office, and hence are criminally and financially liable for breaking your oaths of office. The customers of this utility are its owners who can stand, who, sorry, who can and do hold you legally responsible for your actions. Section two, E web will minimize environmental impacts of its infrastructure and operations to what is necessary for effective and efficient operations. The radiation impact of advanced metering is a significant environmental impact. Increasing the efficiency of the operations by creating more than minimal environmental impact is prohibited by this promise to your customers. Broken promise, broken contract.
Allison, next is Sabrina Segal, followed by Alan Masano.
Second promise, the right to responsive service and fair treatment. Section one, all E web customers will be treated promptly and respectfully without regard to age, gender, sexual orientation, race, ethnicity, disability, language proficiency or social or economic status. Numerous account holders have disabilities which have been created or exacerbated by the radiation emitted from mandated E web metering equipment and have approached the utility with accommodation requests to keep and receive service with their non-radiation producing, non-dirty electricity producing analog meters. Employees you manage have declined those requests, telling customers requesting disability accommodations that failing to install smart meters will disqualify them from receiving service. This violates federal law and is legally actionable. The Americans with Disability Act requires providing safe housing workplaces and access to services to all Americans regardless of disability. Broken promise, broken contract. Section two, we commit to addressing grievances in a timely manner, including access to management, the board or a formal appeals process. Customers have been presenting these grievances to the board for many months, and these grievances have not been addressed in a timely manner. You have not provided access to management or You have not provided access to management or the board, nor have you provided a formal appeals process. You have ignored emails and phone calls on these topics in your meetings, the only venue for public comment and questioning. You do not answer customers' questions or provide follow through to get them answered later. Broken promise, broken contract. In summary, you are now in danger of being criminally and financially liable for breaking your oaths of office, failing to perform your duties, breaking the utilities' contracts with customers, violating federal law, discriminating against disabled customers and causing harm to disabled and other customers. A course correction that enforces the carefully negotiated principles enacted in 2013 could relieve you of most of your liability and financial risk. It is imperative that you once again establish a genuine opt out policy. Consumers may refuse the installation of smart meters, they may keep their analog meters, and if meters have been installed, they may revert to analog meters. And no penalty or extra fee will be allowed against customers making any of these choices. Completing these, this correction will, will keep you from, from legal prosecution that's imminent. Thank you for listening.
Sabrina, next is Alan Gormozano, followed by Sophia Duvie.
Well, Dan. Once again, I gave up going to the Eugene scuba diving club meeting, becoming smart meters and being, have been pushed on us. So this is supposedly a community responsive organization. And where is the response? There are so many people that come here to say, I don't want a smart meter. We don't want a smart meter. We have health issues. We don't want extra electromagnetic radiation around us. My meter, I realized one night, is right on the outside of the wall, right next to where my head is when I go to sleep. I have another friend who did get a smart meter on his house. He's in the same situation. It's right next to his head. So we need responsiveness from you. We elect you. This is supposedly a public utility. We need you to live up to that. And not be making threats. I wake up every morning, did they turn my electricity off while I was asleep last night? Do I still have electricity? Oh, oh, good. The, the blue light is still on from my charger. Oh, good. Do you know what that's like? Every morning, every day, wondering when the hammer's going to come down and, and shut me off and not being able to afford to have it turned back on again. And especially if you take away the option of even having a smart meter turned off. You, the option that I'm hearing from people, I never got a letter, but there was another threatening letter that came out and said that if we turn off your electricity, you would, and then you don't have, no longer have an option to have the broadcasting turned off on your smart meter. So, and as far as charging us extra for having meter readers come out, if we go for the option of no, no radio, make radio going on, we're already paying for meter readers in our rates. I have so much added fees in my rates here, it's ridiculous. So in one month, my actual usage of electricity and water and wastewater and stormwater comes to $150.89. Added fees bring that bill up to $266. Now, some people come and talk about being seniors on a fixed income. I don't even qualify for a fixed income. This figure is half of what I made in the month of March. Do you understand what that's like? Why are there so many added fees on here? What am I paying for? Delivery of electricity, delivery charges? Did somebody come to my house and with a wheelbarrow full of electricity and put it into my house? What is that for? That's already, should be in the basic fee. I, it's already in the usage. What's going on here? So, you know, here we are talking about responsiveness to community. I was up on College Hill on top of that reservoir seeing the signs that say, there's not going to be any more usage on top of the reservoir in the future. All these people roller skating on it. Respond to community. That's a beautiful, wonderful thing your community has. Thank you.
Next is Sophia Gimmich, followed by Janet Gears.
Thank you for saying my name so perfectly. Good afternoon. Um, I handed this out, just inviting the board and Mr. Lawson to follow along with my handout. My goal here, I'm Sophia, I'm in Ward Eight, and my goal here is to take the abstract and turn it into tangible, giving you pictures. My late husband was an engineer, but he was a sound engineer, worked in rock and roll, and he would argue under the table for analog versus digital. Today, we're talking about a different battle around analog versus digital, and this one is actually quite critical. I represent a vulnerable population. I'm currently, we're currently from my eighth concussion. And the page one, you can see, I've illustrated for you, this is my apartments and my bedroom wall is right there on the second floor. And I'm five feet away from eight smart meters, eight of them. Doesn't matter if I opt out or not. My neighbors and I are all doing our best to opt out. Some of them are scared to, don't want to pay the price, but the majority of my neighbors are also on disability. As I put in here, this is one unit out of 30 with two occupants that are literally currently marinating in EMFs coming off of eight meters. We need to have a choice on if we are going to be exposed to this level of EMF and radiation because it's not all single family dwellings. And the way these apartments are designed, this is atrocious. We'll see on page two, again, taking abstract into tangible, I've shown you what the EMF reading is on my bedroom currently without a filter at these Stetzer filters. That. Stetzerizer filters, it's a hundred year old technology that helps to scramble the dangerous EMS. Without it, my EMF reading was 710. With it, my EMF reading was 20. This is tangible here. I've invested already over $500 in technology like this to change the EMS and the dirty electricity that's happening in my apartment. The last page here is an example of another board in California, the SMUD Board of Directors. All it took was one board member to listen to the evidence and say, wait a second, let's stop. Let's research this further. Let's do the right thing. I'm asking for this board, if, even if it's just one of you to put the brakes on this. I'm giving you some clues. On this page, if you, if you research Wintime EMF, this is Eric Wintime, who specializes, he has degrees up the wazoo, about why this is a problem. California, if what with, before it became a legal issue, the board walked it back and did the right thing. Today, I'm asking you to do the same thing. Thank you.
Yeah, next. Hello, my, Abby Slawinski.
Well, I appreciate everything and agree totally with everything this group of speakers have said. My observation as a committed voter, observer of candidates, I ran for city council this spring, is that it's become so politicized, and I'm going to speak to macro and micro. Macro, this whole idea of switching over to these meters and a Gestapo like fashion that we're deprived of our energy source as a public utility is beyond obscene. And I'm not just going to ask, I'm going to demand that these commissioners, five, three of which are up for reelection, and I contacted my commissioner, Ward Seven, Sonia, she hung up on me during business hours of the day. And I was having a, I thought, a fairly calm conversation. She hung up. One of the questions I asked was how do I read these meters, much like my other meters when they run? What do the little boxes and arcs mean? There is no definitive on how they operate when they're operating. From a macro perspective, I have observed elected officials that are supposed to be commissioners, board members are in lockstep with the corporate or the entity that they come into to sit on their chairs and ignore their constituents. We have a council member that was repulsed for that very reason, not communicating with her constituents. You are not beholding to the president of, Mr. Lawson, you are beholding to your constituents and you're hearing an earful tonight from them and the, that. How dare you send out letters to people on fixed incomes and tell them that if you don't comply, your power will be shut off? And need I remind you, our dear city council is thinking of shutting off our gas, diversify, diversifying our power. We can't all be on electric. There are some things that natural gas does a better job of than what our power. And if we're in this energy saving mode, silliness, absolute silliness, and how many of you actually spend time researching as your constituents do? Who put you on those chairs? We did. It is a public utility. It is not a private corporation. You need to get your priorities straight and realize you were elected by community members. Thank you.
Next is Abby Slawinski, followed by Alan Stein.
Hi, Abby, Ward Eight. I and my family are longtime Eugene residents and longtime members of EWEB's customer base. My children, grandchildren and extended family are all here. One or another of us have lived in all the wards represented. We and so many others have been proud of the owner ratepayers of this historically community responsive utility. Our input has been welcomed and integrated into previous policymaking decisions. I am standing before you tonight, however, because of my concern regarding EWEB's commissioners' shifting stance around smart meter installation policy. While a growing number of utilities around the country are recognizing the real health, safety and privacy concerns of their customers and allowing non punitive opt outs to those who wish to keep their analog meters, our own utility company is not making this possible for its owner ratepayers. EWEB board members' decision to install smart meters to all households, disallowing any analog meters at all seems draconian to me. The smart meters with the disabled option will still need to be read manually, as analog meters always have been. Analog meters and parts are easily available and have a great track record of durability, much better than smart meters. Why is there a problem since the disabled meters, the same as analog meters, will both need to be read manually, allowing those who wish to keep their analog meters to do so? EWEB would gain tremendous goodwill and community respect for the current opportunity to recognize and honor the real concerns of its owner ratepayers. Please support and protect our freedom to choose analog meters, the simple, straightforward and fair option that will pay dividends all the way around on into the future.
Thank you, Abby. Next is Alan Stein.
And start, yeah. My name is Alan Stein. I own a business downtown. I've been wanting to come here for months because of this whole thing, the way I've been treated as a businessman. And finally, I closed my business early so I could be here to speak. And I'm speaking as a regular person, customer. I want to thank the organization, whoever they are, to give you documented information that you legally need to follow up on. And I'm just going to share with you who I am. I have three different, and I appreciate you all listening. It seems like you're really listening and I'm glad that you are. So thank you for that. I come here as three hats. I wear three different hats. I've been in Eugene for 40 years, over 40 years, as a homeowner on Almerton Street, as a downtown property owner on Willamette Street, and as a business owner, Stargate Awareness Resources for now 38 years this month. As a homeowner, I opted out and I was very happy that I had that choice to opt out. Last year or so, I get this letter saying that we're going to change the meters, but you could still opt out. I go, what do I mean opting out? Why you change the meter? The meter's working great. They go, oh, it's not working right and we're going to put a meter in that won't be upsetting your health. Well, guess what? I had a technician, they changed it and it is affecting my health. And two, there was nothing wrong with that meter. So I speak as a household representative. Two, I speak as a property owner. I just bought this building before COVID. There's 10 different tenants there. I was able to opt out. Few of us opted out. I'll get back to that, too. As a store owner in the front of Stargate, where I wear the third hat as a retail store, I got a letter saying that you're going to have to change the meter that you opted out on. There's a new policy that commercial businesses have no choice anymore. And that they said that I gotta let them in to get to the meter and change it. That's very disturbing. So I want to ask you right now, are you willing to put me out of business because I want my meter that's analog? If you tell me you're going to close my electricity, I am very grateful for all these people clearly documenting this information. Everything was summarized, threatening letters, illegal action. What I heard, a public utility means that someone has to be on the board, at least two people from the public. And what I observed, those public people are shunned off. It's really not a public meeting. It's a corporation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. And last is Kenda Swatter.
Hey, Ms. Kenda. I'm actually a resident of Glenwood, but I'm here on behalf of my friends and family and community members. I did want to speak on behalf of the College Hill Reservoir. In Eugene, we have a very beautiful, diverse population that includes people that want to go outside and be in a safe environment outside. College Hill has actually been a wonderful, safe environment for all of us. I know it just seems like a lot that has a fence around it, whoop de doo. But at that lot, you have joggers, you have walkers, you have runners, you have children on bikes that are safe. You have people playing hockey. That's the part of community I come from is hockey community. We play roller hockey out there. We play sneaker hockey out there. We are able to teach people, show them what it's like. We are able to do it in a safe environment that we're not having to worry about our items being stolen out there. We're not worried about the people that are around us. We're making new friends. We're building a community out there. And I just want to bring that to your attention. Both basically any evening after school, after work hours, you can drive by and it's going to be busy. There's going to be groups of people there. It's one of our friend group's hangouts. It's just a, hey, want to meet at the slab and shoot some pucks, bring a bike. We have some that don't play hockey, but they'll go and they'll skate around or ride their bikes. I want to speak on behalf of that. We're a really integral part of our community and it's very difficult to see. It's super important to all of us to have a safe place to be. The fence is amazing. I just to be able to see children go out and be kids. They're, they're just running, they're having fun and they're not in traffic. Commonly, it's called sneaker hockey, it's also called, you know, our street hockey. Street hockey, you bring your net up, see a car coming. Street hockey, you bring your net up, see a car coming, you pull it. It's, it's not super safe in the majority of areas that my friends live. People are doing 35 down the road. It's not a viable solution to pull a net out there. You got to see community being built to people. Their first thing they do when they get a new pair of skates is they want to go to the slab. They want to try them out because it's going to be a safe place to skate. It's an even surface to skate. I understand that the system needs updated and that's awesome. I'm excited for that. But I'd like to see a transition that is still a community wealth, welcome environment for all of us to be. And to be able to provide that. It's a really cool place. And I'd really like to see EWEB still be able to champion the community when it comes to our outdoor recreation.
It's kind of. Yeah. We have one more person who's going to join us and provide testimony. So we'll.
Keep going now.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Yarkine. And I'd like to about 17 years ago, EWEB came out and did a digital meter, not a smart meter, just a digital meter. And I wish that I would have known then what I know now. Shortly after that, my wife and I both began to experience symptoms. I have her permission to say this. She ended up with heart palpitations and I ended up with neurological issues. I was at the doctor's office today and I can't write. I can't even write my name anymore. And I've lived a healthy act of life. So I didn't, we didn't realize until we started looking into why are we experiencing this stuff? And one thing led to another. And we did a chronology about our experience. So it took 17 years to get to this point where, you know, I'm, I'm an artist and I can't do that anymore. So that's really disturbing. I have a good life. I have a wonderful family, but I can't prove it. But there's no doubt in my mind that exposure to the persistent, what we could call dirty electricity, I like to call it, unscheduled RF that happens all the time. So you write about the transmissions occurring, not continually, but the dirty electricity happens all the time and it's transient. I can measure it in my bedroom. I can measure it when I did some studies for other people's homes. I can measure that in the baby's room and to the outlet. So I guess that's my piece. I wouldn't add one thing. Looking at your website, it's pretty clear to me. Well, you talk about, I don't know who wrote this. It says, some of our customers have refused access to, for EWEB's attempts to exercise our right to install a meter. So who's included in that R? Am I part of? What rights do I have? What rights do we have? And there's several times in there where you use that language. When you talk about your accommodations for the disability people, you make it really clear. You talk about your legal team. And since we're a public utility, is that my legal thing? So I mean, can I consult them about the issues? Or is it just to promote corporate sales? I don't know. So you make it really clear that you feel the accommodations for disabled people include just shutting off the RF. And you're going to fight that legally with your legal team, what it says in there. And that sounds pretty, pretty harsh. And it makes me wonder with your stance, what your DEI rating would be taking that stance about disabled people.
And with that, we'll begin the public input sessions of the meeting. And this time commissioners have the opportunity to comment. Yeah. Sonia.
All right, well, I do very much appreciate everybody that came down. The meeting, I hear you, we do listen to you. We may not agree with you, but that's different. There's, there are certain things that I've noted on specifically after listening to and looking at the research that you've sent. I also have looked at the American Cancer Society site on RF frequency. And, you know, it's put in line with mobile phones, much lower for smart meters. Mobile phones have a much higher rating. It's marked as probable, which there's lots of things that cause health effects. The sun, for example, you get too much radiation from the sun, you also could have health effects. So for me, it's partially looking at it in moderation. Our meters transmit only 15 minutes. And for all of you who've opted out, they don't transmit at all. And that is our accommodation.
That's not true.
Okay, well, and I'd love to talk to the person after this or just get a hold of me. The person who's invited this. Okay, I'd love to look at the device that you have. Outside of that, I also want to, to address the person who said that I hung up on them. Because I did talk to them for 24 minutes and nine seconds, according to my phone record. I did have a 9:00 AM meeting and I asked for some information to follow up. And I said, I'm very sorry, but we've had a long conversation and I now need to go. As a commissioner, I'm a volunteer commissioner. I don't get paid for this. We're not working for any other corporation. We're here to make good decisions on behalf of you. And sometimes that's really challenging. It doesn't mean that it's not good work. It doesn't mean that we're here to bully you over. We're certainly not. But I had to go to work and that's what I did. And I said, I'd like some other information. I asked for that and I never received it. So, you know.
Abby had to get the information.
We're not, we're not having a back and forth right now. But I, I do want you to know that I've heard you. I appreciate that you're coming down and you're being engaged. That's part of why we are a public utility. We are elected by you and others in the community. So.
Can I just say that gaslighting? We, we have given you information for years, for decades.
We're not going to, we're not going to jump into back and forth just because it's not.
Right, it's gaslighting. It's not, that's what you just did.
It's, it's not really productive. I'll offer as well, I'm hard. I'll put that up on the table here. If folks want to contact me directly and have a conversation outside of this, I don't know if other board members want to do the same.
Pretty much.
Yeah. Barowski does in return calls, does in return email. He does nothing, it's non-responsive.
It isn't. I mean, just wait, is, is there a forum where we can do a back and forth? This isn't it.
But yeah, this isn't it. But, but yeah, but really like meeting one on one with the board members or commissioners.
Don't meet with them.
It's the best. And please Frank.
I'm going to address the commissioners here. And people can listen into this and get some perspective. The policies that are guiding us were developed over 20 years with many public forums, not just one, multiple. This board and previous boards have looked at lots of research. We've had lots of testimony and have developed the policies. People may not agree with them, but as Commissioner Carlson said, that is different. These devices are safe. They are useful and they will lead to benefit for the broader community. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. This, this board and previous boards have made and taken a lot of time for interaction. And so under being very informed in those processes as well. Our organization, like many of our assets, we own, operate, maintain, and choose the assets necessary to deliver our services. We are offering customer choice as to opt in or opt out relative to the communication, which is more than many utilities do.
You look at the people.
So I would again reiterate that this board has spent many hours and previous boards have spent many hours developing these policies in a very public manner, which is consistent with what you're supposed to be doing as a board.
They're ignoring everything we have to say.
Any other comments?
Everything.
Board members? John?
Yes, I'd like to just comment to Kenda. Thank you for coming out and, and everything. And we've been diligent about leaving the public on College Hill Reservoir. But we, we got it shut down. The authorities said we had to shut that reservoir down. And it's during security reasons, we can't have people engaging with our water supplies anymore. Only so many mountains in Eugene and it's all a gravity flow system. And we've had to be played. We have to tear it down. We have to put in two new seven and a half million gallon tanks and we have to close it off to the public. However, we do have a robust thing you'll hear about later this evening. So how we're going to do the best we can to continue to have some opportunities for people to engage, not on the top anymore. I'm sorry. I was on the board when we put a million dollars into sealing that just to keep the dog waste from getting into the water. And then, you know, a week later, we got sued because somebody broke her ankle. But that's an aside, but I appreciate your passion and everything. And I encourage you to get engaged and listen to the program. We're going to have the presentation later this evening and, and see what you can do to, to help enhance it. It's not going to be a roller park. Sorry, but you can get to the parks department about that. But we'll, we'll do our best to make it as, as inviting place as it can be. It probably won't ever be insane, but we're doing our best. We have to provide safe, clean, reliable drinking. So thank you for coming out. We wanted to, you mentioned the reservoir and we get that kind of response. Yet we have a room full of people mentioning smart meters and this sham of a process. And we get nothing but gaslighting.
And we're not going to jump into back and forth. I'm sorry. It's just.
Our lives are at stake where disabled, EMF disabled people, you can't do that to the disabled.
All right, so we're going to move on to the next public. I think I did a plug in. Yeah, I could close it together. Just for punctuation, I'm closing that public here. Then you all coming. Going on to number five, approval of consent calendar A. Move to accept calendar A. By Barowski, second by Sonia Carlson. We need discussion on calendar A. I'm just going for a vote. And all in support. Say aye. I had cast unanimously. Approval consent calendar B. I'd like to pull open a fourth. So we're going to pull items three and items four. Here a motion to approve consent calendar B minus items three and four. Moved by Barowski. Second by Carlson. Approval of consent calendar B minus items three and four. I'll say aye. It passes unanimously.
Sir? So I appreciate staff responding to my questions, but to me, this thing needs fall asleep. I mean, last meeting, we had a half a billion or a billion dollars in Oregon studies post license. Now we've got another million one on providing fish habitat for fish that aren't there. And it may not be fish. We don't even know how they're going to get up over trail. How long is this bringing of money going to continue? Because this is a million dollars a month and I, we've already spent a ton on it. And we already have our license. How long does this go on?
I didn't know who you were looking at.
Hello, good evening.
Elaborate on leases versus clauses.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, um, yeah, I do understand the concern over spending at Carmen. All of the projects that are on the consent calendar this evening are planned and have been planned and budgeted for a long time. The ultimate timing of permanent fish passage is still dependent on dam safety issues. But we do have a requirement to install fish passage, so we will be doing that. And one of, one of our main goals is to implement projects that we can on the ground as required by our license. These habitat projects are required by our license. And even though we don't have permanent fish passage, we do have fish being moved both from the spawning channel and from below trail bridge dam. So this habitat will provide benefit. Not the degree of benefit. It might provide once permanent fish passage is in, but it does provide benefit and helps meet our compliance obligations under the license. So, yeah, Frank, if you want to add, or Commissioner Brown, if you have other questions, happy to answer them.
How many fish came out of that nine?
I believe it was eight. I'd have to double check that. But remember that last, that was out of the temporary trapping hall in the spawning channel. But remember, we had some issues last year and we're only able to run it for a handful of days. Maybe it was eight days we were able to run it because we had the lookout fire that necessitated evacuation of the project. This year, we, you know, we do hope and intend to operate the temporary trapping hall for the full migration season, as was intended last year, but got waylaid by the fire. And then in addition to that, bull trout from below trail bridge dam will continue to be moved as they have for, for many years. So we're hoping for additional fish this year. And, you know, we are monitoring the trapping hall and its efficacy this summer and making some minor modifications to it in hopes that it'll be more efficient next year.
Thank you. I'm, I'm all for, you know, the environment and protecting the fish. It's just that the cost is getting to be very challenging. We're continuing this thing continuing. And I just want to, I, I assume that this million one or million two is going to take care of this for a period of time. Or is this going to be ongoing? Because habitat gets destroyed very quickly.
Yeah, so let me just, I remembered the numbers. I think we operated the trap for eight days and had no fish that were moved out of it. I can check on that, but apologize for getting those numbers wrong. Our license requires an initial installation of habitat and then monitoring to ensure that it's, you know, it provides the benefit as intended. It's likely that at some point during our license period, we'll need to, to do some modifications to that. But we feel really good about the design. And again, these habitat improvements are intended to, to mitigate for habitat loss over the life of the license. So that's 40 years. Anytime you have an asset over 40 years, you expect you will need to do some maintenance on it. So we'll, we do expect that. And there's a monitoring program associated with, with that as well.
Thank you.
Thanks for the inquiry, Mr. Brown. I guess for me, you know, this Carmen license came to fruition before I got on the board. And so, you know, she said that this was planned and budgeted for. I'm just wondering how much more money is planned and budgeted for? Because we see it, you know, $500,000 here, $300,000 there. I mean, is there a final all in number for this project? And are we getting close to getting to that point?
The, I believe the last estimate, and this can be part of our capital updates as well, and as well as our quarterly updates. I believe the last number was right around 180 million or so roughly. I don't think we're anywhere near 180 million yet. There's, there's continued investments that need to be made. The, some of this goes back to the original concept behind a settlement agreement and a license. And that's that you have an organization like EWEB. We're generating electricity. We're gaining revenue from that. And there are a number of other parties who, based on, on our ability to use it in that way, are looking for us to make investments over the course of the 40 year license. And so you'll get a specific update when we talk about capital projects, where we are. But the last number that, that was estimated was, I think, around 180 million all in. As we monitor to, to Lisa's point, as we monitor, that, that could oscillate some. But I don't think we're, we're near that 180 million yet. And I also want to make the point that I know the commissioners who have participated started back in the 2005 range. The investment in electric generation versus the electric in other things. The other things are a very significant part of, of the investment. And so we'll plan to add that to our capital update when we come back to commissioners.
Yeah, and Frank, just to, to clarify, Frank's, Frank's correct. Our, our latest estimate that we've been reporting out in the quarterly reports is that the total project cost, so that's everything associated with implementing the license and capital improvements, is 174 million. We are about half spent on that. So we have, you know, we've, we've expended about half. So we have, you know, we've expended about half of that so far, a little more than half. You'll get an update at, in the next quarterly report. And then also just to put in a plug, I do believe that we just recently are being, got added to the June calendar, board calendar to do a more comprehensive Carmen Smith update. And we can come prepared to speak more specifically about budget at that time.
Thank you for your time.
Just one add on Lisa, if you're going to bring that back, would you also let us know where the 40 million for the fish ladder, if that's in the 174? I mean, because that's a big question mark right now.
So the 174 includes the trappen hall facility at Trail Bridge Dam. Although, you know, we are delayed on fish passage, we are still operating under the assumption that trappen hall is going to be the mechanism by which we will get permanent fish passage. If that changes, we will let you, we'll certainly let you know, but that is not, that's not, we aren't operating under an assumption that we need to move to a ladder. And we have no formal indication that we need to do that at this point.
Thank you. I'll move to adopt items three and four consent calendar B. By Carlson. All in support of adopting items three and four from consent calendar B. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Right on to the next item, the prior year and audited financial statements.
Perfect. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Should I go ahead and dive in or is anyone going to do any, from the E-Web site going to do any kickoff or anything first?
Give me just a minute, Keith.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine. I think it was awkward like this last year, too. I'm Deborah Hart, the CFO and Assistant General Manager. With me, Aaron Ballmer, the Acting Finance Manager, and Rob Freitag, our General Accounting and Treasury Supervisor. That is the sum of my role here. Will be available to answer questions after. Keith, would you like to take over here now? You can do your short team.
Fantastic. Thank you for that, Deborah. Yes, Keith Simovic, partner with Moss Adams. We've served as your independent auditor for a number of years now and I've stepped into kind of the engagement reviewer partner role this year. With me is Aidé Alvarado. You'll get to hear from her in just a little bit as well. She served as our manager on the engagement this year. She's new to the engagement this year, but not new to our firm or the utility industry as she works with me on a number of our engagements that we do for the utility industry that we serve. So happy to have her join us as well as she was very engaged with our team throughout this process. Overall, some good news that we're going to share here and some things that we found along the way that we'll share with you. But I think the first thing that you want to know is that the audit is done. We were able to complete that just a few weeks back. And I will say, this is an audit that historically has been very efficient in wrapping up, right? We spend a couple of weeks onsite for our final field work and we are wrapping up the audit and finalizing everything within typically a couple of weeks of leaving the field. So this is a fairly quick turnaround and we couldn't do that without all the efforts and the efficiency of the E-Web finance team and everyone else that we work with throughout the organization. It's definitely an all hands on deck approach to getting this thing done, but we really appreciate all their efforts. So we'll be going through a little bit of our engagement team. Yes, me and Aidé are here today and you're getting to hear from us, but there's a number of other folks that are involved. So we'll introduce you to a few more of those that you'll get to see on screen. We'll go through the different deliverables that we finalize as part of this process to give you a little bit more flavor for what you can expect to receive out of this process each and every year when you hire an independent CPA firm to come in and do a financial statement audit of E-Web. So we'll talk through those. We'll go through, and you'll hear from Aidé, going through a few of the significant audit areas. This is something that we look at independently each and every year to say, hey, where do we want to spend the bulk of our time? So these aren't all the areas that we're looking at. That's definitely not the case, but these are the areas that we're in tune with and develop additional procedures each and every year to make sure we're addressing new things, significant things as they come up. We'll also go through what do those final audit deliverables say? So, you know, did you, did you receive a clean opinion? Were there any major findings that we noted? Those are the types of things that we'll go through there, but a little bit of a spoiler alert, there shouldn't be any surprises or fireworks from that perspective. So lots of good news there. And then finally, we'll go through what's called our communication to those charged with governance. It's a separate letter that we issue that gives you a little more insight into the audit process and you'll get to hear from us on what's included there as well. Go ahead and advance the slide, please. So this is the snapshot of, and again, this isn't even all of our team. This is the kind of the core group. So in addition to Aidé and myself, Laurel Bruschaco served as our concurring reviewer. You can think of that as a QC review role. That's something that our firm requires on every audit that we do, that we have someone else that's very experienced in the industry, either at a senior manager or partner level. That's really coming in as that cold reviewer, not involved with the engagement in any other way or fashion. They're not coming onsite with us. They're not speaking to your team at E-Web. They are intended to come in and make sure, are we doing our risk assessment appropriately? Are we following through on all the procedures we said we were going to do? Are we following our professional standards? And do all of our final deliverables include the appropriate items within those? So they're reviewing a lot of those key documents and we're not really able to move forward and finalize everything until we have that person sign off. So that's a key role that we have on all of the audits that we do. And then JD Menkens is our in charge senior auditor. He was involved on the engagement. I think this was his third year on the engagement. Excited to have him back again this year and working very closely with Aidé at carrying out the engagement and overseeing the rest of our staff that are pictured here. So that's the core group of our team. Go ahead and advance the slide, please. I know there's a lot of words here, but I'll summarize these briefly. This gives you kind of a snapshot of the different things that you'd expect to receive out of this process, right? So you hire us to come in and do an independent audit. Boxes one and two are really just one deliverable, but two kind of separate services that we're providing there. That one deliverable is our audit report over the fairness and accuracy of your financial statements. But box one is really, how do we get to that point? All the testing that we're doing, all the sampling and the detail review and analytical review and gathering enough substantive evidence that we can say, following all of our professional standards, we believe the financial statements are free of material misstatement. That is the goal at the end of the day. That is the audit opinion that you're probably most familiar with. But we also in box two there, have to do a technical review over that final document. It's not only kind of looking at, hey, are all the numbers recorded appropriately? Are you capturing all the dollars that are flowing through the organization? Do you have good internal controls in place to vet these things within E-Web already before we come in? But also we have to make sure you prepare that final document as of 12/31/2023. That's in the form and content that's required by the accounting rules. So that's another key part that we're doing that technical review, making sure that's in the format that's required by generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP. And also making sure that you're being transparent, including all the disclosures that you're required to put in there based on the types of transactions that you enter into each and every year. Box three is a separate report that we have to issue because we perform the audit in accordance with government auditing standards. So it's a little bit different or higher level of auditing standards and reporting that's required there because you being a governmental organization and us having to follow government auditing standards. That separate report is also included in your financial statements. And this is where we would have to note, if you had any material weaknesses in internal controls, any significant deficiencies in internal controls, or any instances of non-compliance have to be reported within this report as well. So that's an additional report we issue. Box four is an additional report that we issue because you're an organ governmental organization. So the state of Oregon wants us to make sure we're going in and looking at certain, your compliance with certain state statutes. So most notably, we're looking at your procurement processes, where you're parking your, your public funds, if those are in approved depositories, what types of investments you're getting into, if those are following state statutes. Those are the types of things that we're, the state's wanting us to take a look at and issue a separate report, reporting out on each and every one of those items as well and whether we noted any instances of non-compliance. And then box five is one that we, is a report that we issue not every single year. It's all dependent on the amount of federal funding that you spend in a given year. So when you spend over $750,000 in federal funding in a given year, it triggers what's called a single audit. You may have heard that terminology in the past. E-Web has had these audits in the past, but this is a kind of separate from your financial statement audit where we're auditing the compliance with how you're spending those federal dollars. Are you following through on all the requirements within those federal grant award agreements? So that's a separate report that we issue on your compliance with those federal awards. And then finally, I already mentioned our communication to those charged with governance and we'll dive into that a little bit more here in a second. I think with that, we'll go ahead and advance the slide. I'm going to turn it over to Aidé. She's going to go through our significant audit areas and a few more slides after that.
Thank you, Keith. Hi, everyone. As Keith mentioned, some of the significant audit areas that we focused on during the engagement included work order classification. So again, ensuring that work orders that were classified as in process were indeed in process and actively being worked on, as well as IT security and access, single audit procedures, again, looking at federal expenditures as well as federal funds received, revenues and expenses specifically over power trading, as well as then in the current year, the adoption of GASB 96, which is the subscription-based IT arrangements. Next slide, please. Circling back to our audit opinions and reports issued in the current year. So again, we issued the financial statements, which included an unmodified opinion, so a clean opinion, which is exactly what you want to see, as well as government auditing standard reports, which noted no findings. The Oregon Minimum Audit Standard Report, as Keith mentioned, again, noting no findings there as well, as well as then the single audit report, which fortunately no findings there either. Next slide, please. As Keith mentioned, some of the required communication endpoints that were noted in the letter provided to the board included our auditor's responsibility as outlined by auditing standards, as well as any significant accounting policies, which again, in the current year included the adoption of GASB 96, so subscription-based IT arrangements. Any management estimate or judgment utilized as part of the financial statement processing, as well as audit adjustments, which there were none noted in the current year. Proposed adjustments, there were a handful in the current year and we'll hit upon in the upcoming slide here. No disagreements with management occurred during the course of the audit, as well as no difficulties in performing the audit as well. As far as audit observations and control recommendations, we noted no material weaknesses. We do however have a best practice recommendation, again, which was outlined in the letter provided to the board. Next slide, please. Turn it over back to Keith here.
Thank you, Aidé. So this slide summarizes what we call proposed audit adjustments. These are outlined in our letter to those charged with governance. And what a proposed audit adjustment is, is as we're going through and we're doing our testing, once we receive the final numbers and we start pulling transactions and determining, are they recorded at the right amount? Are they recorded in their correct period? Are they classified in the appropriate account or in the right bucket? And are they following all of the generally accepted auditing, or excuse me, generally accepted accounting principles? And so one of the new accounting principles out there in the current year, as you heard, was GASB statement number 96. And this changed how you record what's called subscription-based IT arrangements. What they're talking about with these are any arrangements where you have a contract with a third-party software vendor and you're using that software, but you don't own the software, right? So almost like a lease, but for software. And so in those cases, what the new accounting rules say is you have to record those on your balance sheet or on your statement of net position as an asset that you'll amortize and a liability. And as you're making your payments on these subscription-based arrangements, it pays down that liability, almost as if you took out debt to finance a purchase of the software. So that is the new kind of accounting rule there. What we noted in our testing is there was a couple items that were not recorded in terms of the subscription-based IT arrangements or SPODAs, as we're calling them now because we have to have an acronym for everything, right? So for these SPODAs that were not recorded, they rose to a level that was above what we call our proposed journal entry threshold. These are not considered material overall, but there are things that are high enough that we have to track them, we have to note them to you, and we have to know, is there a bunch of these that's aggregating to a material amount where you would need to post those to get a clean opinion? So in this case, they didn't rise to that level, but we want to let you know about these. So in this case, there's some here, both on the electric and water side, that arrangements that do fall under the criteria of GASB 96, but were not recorded in line with that standard. Part of the reason for that, or really the reason for that, is the fact that your, your team has set a threshold for certain agreements. If they don't rise above that dollar threshold, they're not moving forward with recording those under these arrangements. And again, the reason for that is just the administrative burden of this new accounting standard and having to track some of these. So setting that threshold so you're not pulling all these small arrangements together and having to track these and amortize them and all that kind of stuff. So that's what's happening here. It doesn't create any concern on our part, but again, just something that we're tracking to make sure there's not a bunch of these that aggregates to a larger amount. The proposed adjustments for GASB number 87 or the lease standard, and that was a new one that was implemented a year ago. Again, so this is kind of a repeat thing from the prior year. But these are, again, items where they're falling below E-Web's threshold. They're not big enough to have to record to get a clean opinion, but we're tracking them and wanted to, or have to report them out to you and in our letter as well. And then finally, we had a proposed adjustment related to certain work orders or a work order that we identified that hadn't been closed at year end or reflected as assets in service on your financial statements, but it was in fact in operation. And there was one on the water side that we identified there. Go ahead and advance the slide, please. In terms of our recommendations, again, these don't rise to a level that's, that gives us any concern or anything like that. Again, so we're not classifying them as kind of a higher level of severity of a material weakness or significant deficiency. We are considering these best practice recommendations. And this is one that we've had from time to time in the past and it's related to the proposed adjustment you just saw for work orders that weren't closed, that were in service at year end. I'll say, we audit quite and select quite a few work orders and look at those to see if they are appropriately classified as, as work orders, as construction work in process and not being closed and starting that depreciation process and to a material amount. We are not identifying work orders that aren't being tracked and closed out in a timely manner. So it was these work orders that we identified on the water side that were just large enough that we had to report them out, but doesn't create any material impact to your financial statements. Again, the reason you don't see any recommendations related to the other two items that we noted, the other proposed entries on the lease side and the SPODAs side, is because we have been in contact with your finance team all along the way as they were implementing those standards. We were well aware of the thresholds they set for implementing those standards and we are comfortable with those thresholds. But again, it's something that we look at to see, okay, is there a lot that are below that threshold that are aggregating to a larger amount? Go ahead and advance the slide, please. Overall, I kind of said some of this upfront, but a big thank you to everyone that was involved in this process. We received all the documentation that we needed along the way. We got responses to all the questions that we had. We felt like everyone was very open and transparent. Anytime we reached out for a meeting or a discussion, quick, everyone was very quick at responding and providing us with the information that we needed. So we really appreciate that. And the tone that was set by the organization from the top down and taking this very seriously and making sure we can get through this process in a timely fashion with a good result. Go ahead and advance the slide, please. With that, that concludes our audit report. I'll pause there if there's any questions for any of the commissioners.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the first slide or one of the first slides that you popped up there. I think all of you did a wonderful job. I'm very appreciative of the work that you do to go through the whole auditing process. This is my 11th, I think, here reading the audit reports. I was a little bit surprised and slightly concerned because the letter, the opening letter that normally says, no findings, no findings, no findings, didn't really spell that out in a way that is clear to the unauditor mind. So I had to really dig into the rest of it. And then when I started seeing that there were minor findings that weren't material, I wondered if that was related to it. Anyway, I'm very used to having it spelled out very cleanly in the very opening, you know, paragraph of the first summary there, no findings. So it's just a little comment. Would appreciate in the future to have that in there because it really made me, I normally read through it, even if there's. I normally read through it, even if there's no findings, to see what was said. But it definitely gave me a little bit more concern than I've had ever before. So anyway, I appreciate it. Thank you. Good work.
So this may be for Deborah. On page sixty, I did some math and it looks like we're, is this debt we've already incurred, four hundred and thirty-three million principal and interest? And if so, why such a significant jump in debt in twenty-twenty-nine to those last four or five increments? Or is that debt that's already committed? It is almost a half billion dollars in debt.
So you said page sixty. Is that page sixty from the?
I don't know. It's just page sixty. Oh, I know.
Okay, I'm looking at the same one. I'm not seeing the four hundred and thirty-three million.
Well, yeah, the hundred and eighty-three million in principal, eighty-six million in interest, hundred and one million in principal and sixty-two million in interest between water. I think it comes to plus or minus four hundred and thirty-three million. I just wondering, that's debt we might, so I'm reading correctly. So what's the big jump in twenty-twenty-nine for like fifty million bucks in principal for electric?
That schedule is showing those first five years, single year. And then it's combining five years at a time.
So you're doing five-year increments. So we're going to twenty-fifty-two. So we got a twenty-year window here, but we still have half a billion dollars in debt already.
Correct. We'll have the close to half a billion dollars of debt service in the coming thirty years.
That does not include Second Source or Lieberg or anything. I'm just trying to wrap my head about the macro of just how much debt can we still meet our bond covenants with the coming years. Apparently, they would be telling us that we're not there, but to me, that's alarming for future rate increases, especially if we're going to electrification.
So you do see in the ten-year plan, you see all of that debt service is already included. We typically borrow for thirty years, and so that's why we have that so far out. Our assets are very long-lived, but we we monitor our debt service coverage, we monitor our bond covenants. That's really our role to make sure that we're not showing you financing options that fall outside of the bounds of those requirements, not only the bond covenants, but the requirements set forth by the board around our debt service coverage.
Thank you.
I appreciate that we hire somebody and they have no findings. That makes me super happy. So thank you for, again, having a clean audit. Thank you to the audit team for doing the detailed work that you do on our behalf. And it always makes me just really feel good that our team is approachable and responsive. We've heard that every time. And I think like that makes all the difference. So I appreciate that. To reflect the back from Keith that we're open and quick to respond. So thank you. There's something else? Go to the next item?
Thank you, Keith and Iday.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you all for your time, commissioners.
All right, going on to the next item, and I'm trying to make sure I have it right here, which is the general. And then there's annual performance evaluation merit for each year.
And favorite conversation all year.
All of our favorite conversations, Frank. So I'll just start by sharing with everybody that we had a work session two weeks ago and feedback to Frank in a really long conversation as the whole group, the five of us and Frank, which was productive, I think, and helpful. And I guess with that, I'll open it up to other commissioners. If other commissioners want to make comments or questions on that conversation a couple of weeks ago.
Mr. McCray, I would just clarify it was an executive session.
Thank you.
As opposed to a work session, which is permitted under ORS regulations. Appreciate the clarification.
I just have a question. So last year, MAPT employees got a two-point-one-eight percent to.
What was it average?
Yeah, what was it for this year? One point six was the MAPT employees.
I think that was right around two percent.
Two percent, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, but I think there's no corrects.
One point nine-six, yeah. Other questions or comments, John?
I mean, if we're going to be consistent with what we did in years past, that equates to, if you're going to be consistent with what, that'd be a seventy-five-hundred-dollar judgment at one time, or giving you the same percentages.
Before we jump into that, I just want to say that we, in our executive session, that we received feedback from the executive team to hear how Frank was doing. And Frank also kind of gave a summary of where he thought things were going well, some areas where he wanted to put more focus on, so that we had a process for talking about Frank's review. And we're very positive and that we did identify some questions. But that there was actually a process about, we did this review.
Yeah, I would just add, you know, just for people who are listening in, it was a good conversation. It was a combination of, yeah, here's things that are going well. A lot of that is reflected in the organization and the work that we do and how we approach it, which is really a credit to the entire organization. Also specifically received some feedback from the board related to how issues are presented or appear in the public. The board is obviously representing us as an organization to the public. Don't like to get surprises. And so as the chief executive, how we communicate with the board, how we let them know what is going on is something that we're constantly making adjustments to. We have made some alterations the last few years. One of those having to do with Jen Connors and her group providing the board with here's upcoming media, your past media. And but also recognizing that there's a lot of things that happen when you're running a two-billion-dollar organization that you need to communicate with the board. And the message to me was, we'd like a little bit more rather than less. And so if there's areas that we think might appear in the public eye, we'd like a greater degree of heads up for that. So that was something specifically that, feedback that I got from the board, which was helpful. But then also just recognizing the good work of the organization as we pursue our strategy and as we keep the lights on and the water flowing and and all the things necessary to do that. So that was my summary in thirty seconds.
Yeah, so this is where Frank talked about it. He's an employee with five bosses, right? And I come from the world where there's one or two bosses and a whole bunch of employees, right? So getting out compensation is kind of tricky and having to do it in a public forum is even more tricky. You know, usually it's, when I do it in my business, it's kind of more of a confidential one-on-one, you're doing a good job. Reflect that in some sort of compensation. I do believe Frank's done a good job. You know, an example of that was played out earlier on. You know, we set policy and he is in charge of implementing that policy throughout the organization. The policies were set and he and the rest of his team are working on implementing those policies. They have been set by this particular board or earlier boards, but he's still charged with putting those out. And I think that him and his staff are doing a good job doing that. That being said, now it's it's always tough to spend money when we're having, asking customers to pay more if we have rate increases. But yet, for me, even though I've got rate increases and cost of doing businesses is higher, the cost of labor is higher and our one employee is the general manager. And so for me, I believe that a performance bonus is in order. And I would propose that that would be a two percent bonus. The question that I would have is, if we give that two percent, does that go to the base salary? So his next year's salary is based on that, or is it a one-time bonus? That the base, because his base salary goes up percentage-wise each year.
So the board can do it either way, Commissioner. The way my compensation works via the contract I have is that there's an automatic adjustment to the salary at the beginning of the year based on what we're doing for the rest of the organization. And that's relative to a combination of cost of living and also forecasted compensation adjustments with other organizations going forward. So that's where the actual salary piece is typically taken care of. Last year was a one-time, did not affect the salary and, but the board can do it either way.
I would propose a one-time two percent bonus performance award.
Conversation?
No, I'd just like to clarify your proposal that it doesn't go against his base.
Right, it's a one-time. Yeah, it's like I said, your one-time performance award.
All in support of the motion from Borowski?
Thank you, commissioners. All five of you. But also, you know, really thanks to staff, the people of the organization.
Moving on to the next item, the College Hill Six-O-Seven Reservoir Replacement Update.
President McRae, Commissioners, General Manager Lawson. It's our pleasure to be here tonight to talk about the College Hill replacement project. You're going to get an overview of what's happening with College Hill and also a little bit of an update about our East Fortieth reservoir site. I'm Karen Kelly, Chief Operations Officer, and with me tonight is Laura Farthing, Senior Engineer and Project Engineer for this replacement project, and Jen Connors, our Communications Supervisor. So happy to be here. Just briefly, want to talk about the background of this project. You've heard me talk about this before. Happy to do it again. College Hill reservoir is by far the most unique piece of critical infrastructure I've actually ever come across in my almost twenty-nine years in the utility business, especially in water. But it's not because of the structure itself. It's because of how the community has utilized and enjoyed it. If you heard some of that tonight. But also, that said, it's the structure I've worried the most about in my career, not only as the health inspector at one time for E-Web, but also as a water operations manager and now as the Chief Operations Officer. And that's because of the current condition of the tank and also because of that same access that we've had, that people have enjoyed. Bringing in human impacts to that reservoir keeps me up at night. I'm really happy to say it is offline now. So that does help a lot of us sleep better at night. The tank is about eighty-four years old, maybe eighty-five now. The concrete tank's life expectancy is about fifty years and it's served this community well. But it's time to replace it with a more robust and seismically sound and operationally efficient structure that meets modern standards. Sorry. Okay, so just a little bit more here. So you've heard me talk about that safe drinking water is paramount to our community's health. It is also important, critically important to our healthy economy in this community. So we're investing today for a resilient tomorrow because our base-level reservoirs are such a critical part to our multiple-barrier approach to safe drinking water. And to our resilient spine. So water storage is critical to having a robust quality product that is delivered to our customers every day. It's one of the last steps in the process. So this is finished drinking water. It does not undergo additional treatment. It needs to stay secure, it needs to stay in high quality and be served to all of our customers, not only for drinking water, but also for fire protection and emergency uses. So it does have, all of our base-level reservoirs have quite a few issues, except our new East Fortieth reservoirs. So we'll talk about some of those issues. Resiliency and reliability is one. All of these existing base-level reservoirs have structural and seismic deficiencies and they're at or nearing the end of their useful life. We have concerns about water quality. We need to make sure they meet modern standards for quality and we're focusing that into our design elements for these reservoirs. So we can reduce the water age and improve the flow as well as the security from vandalism and other nefarious threats to drinking water. Operationally, we have concerns about taking these reservoirs out of service. It causes difficulty in how we operate the system and maintain pressures for drinking water, fire suppression and so on. The new designs allow us to take one tank out of service while keeping the other in use. On the regulatory side, there are issues as well. So you have heard about College Hill having deficiencies in the roof system leaking. And that was required that we get that reservoir either replaced or taken out of service by a certain date, which we have now met. But we also have other concerns out there, and one of them being our Santa Clara reservoir, Nancy, out here in the north end of town. So one thing I want to mention about Santa Clara is that that reservoir is actually under evaluation right now as we develop the updates to our master plan. So speaking of our master plan, we have been working for the last decade at upgrading our Hayden Bridge Water Treatment Facility and our raw water intakes. We've been moving into the distribution system. Since then, we have many more years to go in updating and replacing the resilient spine of our distribution. And that also does include our distributed storage. So one thing I want to mention here is the distributed storage has been in the plan for a very long time. That does include the replacement of College Hill. So twenty-fifteen was the last time we had our master plan update and it did recommend these distributed storage sites to bolster that resilient spine. But we've been talking about this project openly and publicly since about twenty-eighteen. So it's not new information, but happy to come and talk about it some more tonight. So you can also see the Ten Year Capital Improvement Plan includes that construction of the new tanks at East Fortieth, which you're going to hear more about here in a second. Replacing College Hill and Hawkins Reservoir, strengthening our transmission system. And again, decommissioning Santa Clara Pump Station and Reservoir. And over the next year, as you do hear updates to our master plan, what the future holds for Santa Clara will become more clear. So more to come on that. And now I'm going to hand this over to Laura to give you the updates on the reservoirs themselves.
As Karen said, I'm going to give you a project status. Thought we'd start with an East Fortieth Avenue update. So both tanks are fully commissioned. They're both online. We've also isolated College Hill and it's been drained. So the community is now getting their drinking water from Fortieth. We've started backfilling. It was initially very slow, but they've got enough far enough, have enough space they can find the Gabriel equipment in. So we're anticipating the backfilling should be done at least probably in the next month or two. And then we'll move into landscaping and restoration. We've started working with Jen. We've started working on the public outreach portion of the landscaping. I included one of the renderings that we sent to the nearby neighbors to get input and feedback on what the site's going to look like and what amenities they want, its trails or other things around the site. And then we also have some transmission and stormwater drain piping that's still continuing. That'll be going on along Hilliard Street until about the end later in twenty-twenty-four. That'll be going on along Hilliard Street until about the end later in twenty twenty-four. So when we were thinking about College Hill, um, it's important to make sure that we incorporate the lessons that we have learned. Um, we had quite a few changes to the design that happened during construction that helped us streamline the process. One was, uh, we've learned a lesson that pipe supports with bolts in the floor can equal leak at the end of the project. So we have eliminated those in the next phase, um, or detailing how we're doing the piping inside the tank. Uh, the backfill initially in the design documents was very complex. It included, I think, five different kinds of rock with different fabrics and stuff separating them all. That would have just taken a long time and be very expensive to build. So we were able to work with our geotechnical engineer, simplify that to have it be a readily available rock in town. Um, it's made it go much faster. So we're incorporating that into College Hill. Um, it also had a leak detection system under the tank that was made out of a pond liner. It would have taken large equipment and lots to build. We actually swapped that out for just putting pipes under the tank and that worked just fine during commissioning so that we could determine what was happening during the process. So we've eliminated that, that was about a three hundred thousand dollar savings in the project. Um, and then we also learned that even though the geotechnical report, they do the best they can, but when you expose rock to wind, water, it'll erode faster than anticipated. So we kind of had to do some extra steps to protect the slope. We're incorporating those steps earlier in the process in College Hill just to make sure that workers stay safe when they're down, that excavation. I've had quite a few blasting lessons learned. I'm sure everyone here knows that we had a blast that was, um, not always intended. However, it did not cause any damage to insignificant damage to nearby structures. Uh, overall, it was safe, however, we did learn that we do need to expend the blast mats. So we've changed our specs to call out a distance past the holes that are drilled before we start the blasting. So we'll be adding extra blast mats from the get-go on this one. Um, we also included some more robust pre and post inspection minimum qualifications. It gives E-Web, um, kind of more say in who they hire and what their qualifications are before we have them go into houses. And then the other thing is, we just wanted to make sure that we had some sort of muscle. We had no claims or damage during the East Fortieth, but we did have a couple of questions that came up that it was, as the blasting was nearing the end, it was kind of hard to get the contractor to answer questions in a timely manner. So we included a timeline of what our expectations are for them to respond either to the project team and then to the publics that we were making. The other thing is the tank used a bridge concrete mix design that uses a really large rock for the floor and the reservoir roof, which works really well in the Portland area where they have more suppliers of concrete. Over here, we're pretty limited, so we ended up changing that kind of in the middle just because of quality concerns and availability concerns. Um, that'll actually equal, uh, there'll be more competition on the concrete moving forward with College Hill, which will save us money. It also is easier for the construction, so it makes for a better construction. Uh, doesn't combine the piping in the tank in this one. So in Fortieth, we had it as two separate projects, which caused some scheduling issues as we got closer to the end of making sure that we had the right contractors working on the right pieces of piping so that we could have the transmission mains, we could get water into the tanks. Also, the big one was being able to have adequate drains, because we have to drain the tank during the, um, disinfection process. So to help make that go a little smoother on this one, we're running it as one project. One team. And then the other big thing that we learned, Edison Street was hard because it was a dead-end street, but that when you're installing piping fairly deep in solid rock, it is really impactful. Um, I think that was probably one of the more challenging parts of the project. So we really changed how we, we looked at how we're going to install the piping and where we're going to install it. And we were able to do an evaluation, so on College Hill we'll be using a trenchless technologies. Um, the piping was going to be about thirty-five feet deep in Lincoln Street. And that's unsafe and hard to get equipment in, so we were able to change how we're going to do that work. So we have very similar goals for College Hill that we had for East Fortieth. One, you know, Karen's already talked about the security and protecting water quality. Um, there are two big ones for this, for the secure facilities, they will be fenced, um, the top will be closed off. And for water quality, we actually are designing all these tanks to be the same. So hydraulically, they'll work together. Right now, they're all at the same top elevation, but their bottom elevations are different. So it makes it very challenging from an operations standpoint to keep water moving through them and to protect the water quality. It'll be designed to modern seismic standards, so they'll be available through and after an earthquake. Uh, we'll have provisions to get the water out, um, valve valves again, that'll close to keep the water inside and then we'll have mechanisms to get them out after an earthquake. We're also doing this to limit visual impacts to nearby neighbors and meeting all the city code requirements for landscaping. We laid out the site to maximize how much space was available for recreation because we know that this is a very valued place and we as a team also value recreation and open public spaces. We keep an eye on equity and making sure that the decisions we made are equitable for all of the ratepayers. And we're also honoring the historic nature of the existing facility, which Jen will talk about further. So right now, from the, from an engineering standpoint, the project elements, we're going to be demolishing the existing six oh seven reservoir. The smaller six oh three reservoir will be removed from the site at the beginning. We also have an earthwork phase, the tank construction. And then we're splitting the piping, even though it'll be one team, we're going to be doing the piping from the site to the intersection of Twenty-third and Lincoln as trenchless to make it easier for access. And then we'll be running pipe down to Willamette Street. Uh, and then they'll be backfilling and tank construction and then backfilling and restoration. So the tanks are the same, as I mentioned, same diameter, same top elevation, same bottom elevation as East Fortieth. Kept an eye on the proximity to residents, I think we have about eighty feet from the property line to the tank walls. That provides a pretty good buffer on the south side, that's the closest neighbor. Uh, we also kept it within the footprint of the tank, just to minimize impacts. Even keeping an eye on the compatibility with the neighborhood, so building a berm on the Lawrence side, the tanks will be almost, or on the Lincoln side, on the Lawrence side, the tanks will be almost fully buried. Those residents will see the top of the tank and not the side. Also looking at how the fencing fits with the nearby neighbors and how landscaping. We also have been doing economic analysis on tank siting and kind of what amenities we're. And we, making sure we have adequate access for maintenance and operations in the future. Talked about the security, the tanks themselves will be fenced, but we'll be fencing as close to the tanks as possible, allowing the site to still be open. Jen will talk more about that process. Kept an eye on excavation and construction, so these tanks have to be ten feet lower than the existing. So they'll be a paramount. In this, and to make it so that the bottom elevation is matching what we're. Watching out for environmental impact. Well, the things I mentioned about the piping, the easiest way to do it is to replace the existing piping that's there because the earthwork is almost, um, you see, you can see the road in the picture here. Piping goes under all of the trees. In order to, to that sort of piping installation, we would have had to cut down all trees on Lincoln Street. So we instead have decided trenchless installation, which is safer, faster, it'll be less effective that we could save the trees, which provide enough buffer for the safety. And then we laid the site out, so there's plenty of space for to do improvements or things, it's a hundred years from now, there'll be space to be. So we did, because of the piping changes, going to take a little extra geotech work, a little extra design. Did split out the demolition and earthwork, see that contract come through on the board. A board meeting for approval. Um, we're going to sustain that work will probably be done in late twenty twenty-four, early twenty twenty-five. And we'll go into tank construction, piping down to the intersection of Lincoln and Twenty-third and the backfilling will all be on contract that allows the contractor to piping access to both. This is a painting that'll be a board in twenty twenty-four, early twenty twenty-five, it's really dependent on how that. We're, this is saying the tanks will be completed by the year end of twenty twenty-six. And as I mentioned, there's some additional transmission and storm drain piping that will go down Lincoln Street to, um, the existing system and. For, we're going to time that for about mid-twenty twenty-five and that work will be ready prior to the tanks. Will help us facilitate commissioning. Then I'm going to site restoration, which will be late twenty twenty-six, early twenty twenty-seven. And we'll all be. Construction goes. Currently in the budget, there's thirty-four million dollars for this project. Um, Fortieth had twenty-eight million dollars for the tank, ten million dollars for the pipeline. It's a good twenty-eight million dollars for the tanks at College Hill. Same as pretty similar construction. Six million dollars for the piping, because it's the shorter distance that we have to run. Oh, I will pass it on to Jen.
Hey, everyone, so for the record, I'm Jen Connors, Supervisor, and I'm the Public Communications for the College Hill project, um, along with another colleague. So, um, Commissioners are familiar with the region for the East Fortieth Storage Project and there are many similarities between that project and College Hill. For example, the importance of being clear and authentic with public about opportunities more meaningful. For College Hill, we'll not be asking for public input on design, engineering, construction, or three of the things that define. And broadly backwater quality and safety must be. There is where the public can have the greatest impact on project outcomes, our landscape design, utilities. Is to provide the community with ways to make the. Details in your pocket, we're communicating early and often, using a variety of channels. First, project website, email, video, surveys and comment forums, getting conversations. Storage mitigation is an important part of this process. The site is considered locally historic significant structure. To that end, E-Web has entered into consultation with the state Historic Maintenance Office, SHPO. We begin historic loss, historic loss of this structures with agency stakeholders and the public. Beginning public process, there are constraints and trade-offs and E-Web will not be able to act on all requests. Even some of the very popular ideas. We ask for outside expert opinions on the feasibility of maintaining our concrete reservoir and that is not possible to project and risk. However, it is possible to retain portions of the railing posts that surround the top of that reservoir to incorporate this into the final landscape. Public input that we've heard on stored mitigation, the results of our analysis and vetting. Trade-offs, trade-offs, those are all published on the project website for any customer to view. So the public process is kind of like a funnel, started with a call for, uh, open call for ideas, uh, of open rainstorm. The E-Web staff and outside experts will do and vet those ideas to narrow them down to a handful of meaningful options. We're currently collecting feedback on multiple feasible options that input to inform final solution. Twenty months after demolition, we'll shift to our focus to landscape planning. Utilize public events, ways and other tools to inform and engage neighbors, users and the public at large. It's like historic mitigation, there will be constraints and trade-offs for landscape design. Big cost. Project team is reiterating the clear and consistent message that while the new tanks will not be open for public use, we're committed to a public input process for landscape restoration. Training of the new tanks and low-impact recreation facilities that we enjoy by everyone while aligning with broader community values. Use of pellet guns, safety. So just as Laura covered, lessons learned from East Fortieth on an instruction and engineering standpoint. We also have lessons learned from the patient's team. Um, I grid these into two columns. So introduce refers to things that we didn't do at East Fortieth or we didn't as well as we could. But first of all, we want to cast, uh, a much wider net. And this is a gap on the experience. The College Hill project, we delivered a postcard with information about the effort to, uh, all residents within one mile radius of the site. Thousand households, we already have more than a hundred subscribers, a topic email list. We also want to do a better job reaching out and engaging with underrepresented groups. Begin to identify and collect perspectives from either the first group of customers, including those who did play at the reservoir, as well as customers who live outside of the College Hill neighborhood, impacted by the project through water rates, quality, sustainability. Representatives in groups often have varied participation. So we actively reach out to several groups, invite them to email list, to the project team, show how they would like to be part of this process. Some of the groups we reach out to are C-It's, Paul, in the release of P, Arslan, De La Familia, and Forward Day and Bethel. And then the continue and refine column, these were things that we did for East Fortieth and we found them to be effective. Do even better on the Call of Duty project. First one is raising awareness around the crucial role of these things in water. First and foremost, this is a drinking water quality issue. That can sometimes get lost in the emotional connections to this site. Second is, um, being clear about participation opportunities, all spectrum from. The importance that that's communicated clearly to the public and also that there's strong internal and more of a vision site. Correction. That was really a lot of the Fortieth project, it's not on the schedule or on the. For things, all Commissioners have mentioned that going out and visiting the East Fortieth site, having tours, being regular updates from the project teams. Official, our goal to provide information is first we do, we can actively gain the new to the community and build confidence in decisions that involve trade-offs. At the last board meeting last month, the Commissioner, uh, noted that we should ensure that other elected officials are part of this process. And I just wanted to let you know that Emily Semple, also for the Ward, is on our, um, project email list. She attended the first his implementation meeting. Also, um, County Commissioner Lori Traeger is on her. And then finally, we need to, um, expect and handle misinformation, more and more common in our world. Deal with it, but also be strategic in those response, more displace misinformation with clear and accurate information, not amplifying. So, um, as we get closer to demolition, we will obviously, uh, notify the public well in advance to host a farewell event out at the site, that's in early standing, uh, planning stages. And, um, as we did with East Fortieth, um, construction project.
So just want to thank everyone for your support of this project and the East Fortieth site. Um, as I mentioned, this cannot be done on schedule and on budget without your support, so. And open up for questions and comments.
Great, thanks, John.
I've sat here for a lot of these presentations and I've never been more impressed with the way you handle the ball and projects I've seen, I've never seen one done better. This is not to diminish what other clients have been, but that's up to you and me. And I think you've done an exemplary job and thank you so much for doing it. Thank you very much for the project. You did it from standable, affordable, checked all the boxes and you're doing something very much for success. I'm sure now I've set the bar and I may have to do it again. So, uh, I do have one question on your, on your, um, depiction of the two tanks up the northwest corner of our site. There's an old reservoir, there's a concrete, is that staying? Okay, that's going.
Yeah, that also will be demolished as part of this project. We need the space for staging and parking contractors.
And the tower is going as well?
The tower will be going, um, the timing of that will be after the Verizon lease expires, so we don't, it's in twenty twenty-five. That'll be a separate bid package.
Okay, fine, thank you very much. And again, thank you for, for making our job secure by your, your taking, doing this right, I really appreciate it. But there's.
Good question, um. Thank you for the presentation and I, um, really appreciate kind of the lessons learned and things that we're going to do differently. And I have a question about the public participation and the public outreach and I'm just trying to find where you, the timeline. But I guess my question is, it's going to be kind of a while.
But I guess my question is, it's going to be kind of a while until the public participation piece about the landscaping and what the site is going to be. And that's what most people are going to have fairly strong feelings about. So I'm, maybe I'm just using out loud, I don't know if I actually have a question here, but it's just. I don't want people to get nervous or agitated during the meeting period of not knowing what's going to happen. And I'm sure you've thought about this, obviously, and I'm just curious how you think about.
Yeah, that's a really good point. We are already collecting people's comment on landscaping, even though we haven't launched the formal process yet for that very reason. It's something that people are really interested in. There are, and he's already engaging with us and talking what they want to be defined, right? So we are collecting that input now. We do have a timeline on our website that describes the storage mitigation. Process and timeline, the landscaping process and timeline, and how those will eventually converge. You know, at East Fortieth, we didn't start collecting input on landscaping until now. You know, we're backfilling and that's when we started that process. And there are pros and cons to doing it that way. One thing I will say is that this site is going to be a major construction zone for.
Thirty four years.
So there's some, some advantages, I think, to waiting and not waiting to collect input, but collecting input throughout the process. Because the site, how people want to use the site may change over the next couple of years as they're kind of finding other places to roller skate and do tai chi and that. So we all have a very, basing what we want to see at College Hill based on how it's used in the past. But giving it some time, we may, as a community. Customers come up with other ideas for how to use the setting. So it is a bit of a balance and we are trying to be clear with customers that. Engage with us now, we're already listening with a formal sense, how we can get to the top and we'll span, you know, well into the construction process. So that we can really take our time with these important decisions.
Think also, just in the beginning, we're taking, you have to get a certain way through the design in order to be able to see kind of what the site's going to look like. And we are at, for the backfilling and the restoration, we're in between about sixty and ninety percent design, which is about where you need to be. And we are taking that and generating renderings that will show where the tanks are going to be. Just, we did it with East Fortieth too, just to generally show kind of what will be available for open space. It'll be kind of a blank. Look grassy for now, but it is, it will show screening up against the fences, kind of as an idea, like, hey, we will screen this. So that people do know that, you know, this is what's going to be available and here's how the tanks will appear. So that's happening as well.
In the Parks Department at all, like, are they? Speaking or participating, I just think about, you know, if, if this amenity is going away for, for people. But EWEB's mission to bring open space and recreation for the community, but there is, is a department that does do that. So I'm curious if they, you know, want to get, get near this or just to hear like from the community what, what the community wants.
I'm actually meeting with some of the Parks Department on Friday to discuss that. They're aware of what they use, where they've been contacted as well. And so I'm trying to lean into them, you know, historically, you know, they've wanted to be with our site, which makes sense. But I don't know what'll come of that or how that'll pan out, but we are, we have reached out to the Parks Department as well.
Thank you.
I know we're early on in the design phase. But I was real pleased with the. Construction crew that we had at the, at the last one. Have we gone out and put that out for bid yet? And is there any chance that the same people are going to be building this one?
There's always a chance. We do have public, you know, purchasing laws, so we do have to go with a little bit. However, the demolition and excavation phase went out to bid this morning. And we have contacted the same contractor to make sure they're interested in bidding on it, so they will likely submit a bid.
And when does the construction one go out?
The construction one won't go out probably until late 2024, early 2025. However, they have indicated that they are into bid on that as well. But again, you know, we have low bid.
Absolutely.
Things, I can't sway in anyway.
It comes to us. We made the final decision on who, who the bid goes to, even though there's. I was, I noticed the, the change in the concrete specs. Has there been any? Investigation into low carbon concrete being used, utilized in this project?
Yes, well, from the standpoint, you know, the, the kind of green concrete that you can add chemicals to has not been approved for drinking water yet. So everything that we need to use in the tanks has to be NSF sixty one compliant. So from that standpoint, no. However, we carried through the changes that we made on East Fortieth to change the fly ash and cement ratio to reduce the carbon load on concrete. And then we also changed the column spacing and made some changes to get our carbon footprint as low as possible. So we have carried that through, same concrete changes through on this project.
And their local, their local. Or suppliers of that type of, of material?
Yes, the fly ash is dependent on how much energy they're generating from coal. So we don't have any, because it's a coal byproduct, so we don't have any say over that, but assuming that they are operating, then yes.
And then just. I noticed it was in the last slide, but having a going away party, I think is a great idea. I think we should publish that as, as much as we can. And also, I think the, one of the things that was well received at, at East Fortieth was the observation. Grandstands and if, I don't know if there's enough, if there's space in this place to do that.
Plan.
I'm happy to hear about that because I know there were people that brought their kids out and was like, oh gosh, we get to watch the big trucks and do that kind of stuff.
It's important to me, so there are going to be viewing places on both Lawrence and Lincoln side.
And I would, I would put that out in the communications to bring your, bring your checks.
Not every day you get to see your drinking water be, that your infrastructure be built. So any chance that we can get for education opportunities, I'm all in.
Great, thank you.
I just, a couple of comments. Congratulations to you and the team for. The water tanks at Fortieth and having them fall must be hugely gratifying and having them be must also be hugely gratifying. There's a little bit of me that's also sighing a bit really, maybe not quite to the extent that you are, but yeah, it's great to see that. So thank you for your work on that project. I did get some comments about tree removal. You know, you know, there are going to be people frustrated with the loss and, and I think we all understand that. And it was remarkable to go to our website and see a map of the project site down to the individual tree. And in fact, the map had been updated with one additional tree that was going to be removed. I mean, the, the level of precision and detail available to the public that wants to know what's happening on that site is kind of mind blowing. So thank you for doing that work. This is in my award. I'm sure we're going to hear a lot about it. Go forward to taking hold of the site as things progress. If you're the work.
Well, yeah, thank you. I'm so impressed and grateful that we have you on our team doing this great work. I mean, it's, it's funny because the irony is not lost on me in that on the Fortieth site. It was mostly a discussion about, you know, not losing trees. Here, we're also talking about not losing concrete. And I appreciate the, the, all the efforts taken for the historical mitigation work. And I do think it's important that, you know, we include not just the electeds that. Are, you know, represent that, the area there, but the others that, you know, generally will hear comments from the public. So I don't know if we've sent our invites out to them and maybe just these two have signed up, but if we haven't done that. I, I really do think it's a good idea for whoever initially raised that to have the others involved or informed about that process. But I had a couple of, just briefly, questions about the Santa Clara site. So you mentioned that it was under review. Is that under review by us specifically? Or is it also under review by the state? And are there other concerns there that? Thinking about.
As part of the master plan, we have a contractor that's doing the evaluation. And they're looking at feasibility of, you know, do we need replacement storage? What, what's the hydraulics look like from south hills to the north end of town? Can we operate efficiently and still meet all of our emergency flow and fire flow standards without it? Those are the kinds of things that are being looked at. If we replace it, does it need to go in the same location? It's, we pump water out of that reservoir, unlike the rest of our base level, which operates on gravity. So it's less efficient. Is there somewhere else to place it if we do in fact need to replace storage? Where might that be? So those are all being considered right now. Do you want to add anything?
Pretty much, it's got significant structural issues. Given its location, it has some soil issues. Like seismic reasons, so it is. It's a bit of infrastructure, but we're looking at alternatives. We're looking at some other sites around town as well that have appropriate elevation to allow from gravity flow. And so we're leaning in on our consultants, depending on their, or the independent view of what needs to happen to that.
So we may or may not need to replace it. I guess I've always kind of thought that we. Were, it was, you know, in the lineup. How, how old is it compared to the other?
It was. It was built in the mid seventies and it will be, it will need to be replaced. It can't be, it's rehabits. I think it's between five and ten million dollars. It only extends its useful life by another fifteen years and so it will need to be replaced, but it was built in the mid seventies.
So it's not nearly as old, but it's still due to the, just the nature of it and how it's built. Something needs to happen to it.
Something needs to happen.
But we're not under an order by. Regular for a commissioner. Great, thank you.
Since we opened that door and then probably serves my words. I know five, six years ago, we replaced the water line. We took it off the bottom of the wall, hung it off the line bridge because that truck got stuck on it. So does water flow from the east side of the river to the west or does it flow from the west to the east?
It varies on the time of day and what's happening at the treatment plant. Generally, water goes from Hayden Bridge to, from the east to the west and.
From the east to the west.
And then we pump it out and then when we pump it out of Santa Clara, it can be used to send water into the south part of town. So it'll go, go in either direction.
And I know that EWEB sold Gillespie View to the city of Passit Park years ago. And that, that was a reservoir site that they have trouble serving the hounds on the edge of Gillespie View. Has there been any thought about trying to reengage them to replace that for the north end? Or is that, I know that'd be a heck of a conversation for the neighborhood, but.
We, we have. Opened that conversation many times. Even if that was to go backwards, there's some land use issues with being able to build there that would have to be overcome. There's an overlay zone that limits the height. And then there's also just that it's, it would be a challenging site for us to build on at this point. Because once we sold that to the city, we stopped building the transmission system and all of like the backbone infrastructure that would have to get there. So at this point, we would have to run a significant amount of transmission piping as well as just the construction itself.
So, thank you.
Just one quick thing. First of all, it's very unusual that the public provides input that asks us to maintain the slab. You know, of concrete, which is pretty unusual for us as a public agency to hear. But I would also just like to mention that the fact is not lost on us that especially related to public input relative to amenities. Where there is a delay, especially at College Hill, that we have a great example in front of us to finish, which is East Fortieth. And if we can show a great example at East Fortieth as to how the public can contribute to the amenities and the ultimate end product. That will go a long ways toward the conversations to people about the next one, which is College Hill. And so I think the fact that we recognize the opportunity at East Fortieth is, is not lost on us when it comes to its impact. On people interested in College Hill and its future.
Comments? Thank you all. Appreciate the time and presentation. That's the end of the first part here, so we will take a ten minute break. It's five till we'll come back at five after we'll take a short recess.
It's five till we'll come back at five after we'll take a short recess.
Hey Eugene Water Electric Board. And we're going to dive right into item number 12, the guidebook. And just hand it over to Kelly.
Great. Hello, everyone. My name is Kelly Hale. I am the Climate Policy Analyst and Advisor, and I am joined here today by my two esteemed colleagues, Adam Ru, our Race Manager, and Andrew Geno, Senior Environmental Specialist. We're here to provide you with an update on the latest iteration of the Climate Guidebook. I wanted to start off by saying Happy Earth Month. As promised, last year, major updates to the Climate Guidebook are expected annually in April. In celebration of Earth Day, which is on April 25th, a major update is designed, is designated by having a complete refresh of all the information that's included in the guidebook over the previous period. And we're excited to be here today to share version 2.0 with you. So I'm going to cover quickly what's new in version 2.0 of the Climate Guidebook. I'll touch on our public outreach plan as we are complete with phase one. And I'll be spending some time covering the 2023 GHG inventory results for EWEB's internal operations, as well as covering EWEB's role in Eugene's CAP 2.0. And I'll finish tonight's presentation by covering the next steps, what you can expect in 2024. So I do want to say that I'm super grateful to have Andrew and Adam here with me today. Adam took a lead role in updating EWEB's rate making principles that are found in chapter two of the guidebook. And Andrew took a lead role in conducting our GHG inventory for 2023 that can be found in chapter six. But there were more than 40 different staff members across the organization that helped contribute content to the latest iteration. So I just wanted to say thank you so much to everyone. It was a joy to work with so many people from across the utility to provide this resource. So what's new in version two? There's many things that are included. There's a complete refresh, as I mentioned, with fully updated information in each chapter. I won't go into all of the details here as it's also outlined in the table associated with this agenda item in your packet. But one thing I do want to notice or notify you of is that within chapter two, we did add an entire section here that outlines EWEB's rate design principles. These are nothing new. You should have, they should look very familiar to you. You'll, you've probably heard about that from our wonderful finance team over the years. But we do expect to update those over the next year. And so we wanted to include them here for transparency and as a starting point for future discussions. So turning to phase one of our public outreach plan. We're excited that when we launched the Climate Guidebook, we wanted to do some outreach with folks across the community. There were two components to our phase one outreach plan. We did external outreach focused on folks that were intended to be super users of this resource. So you'll see the wide range of 16 different organizations that were contacted. And we also did internal outreach with customized presentations for different divisions based on the information that was most useful or most relevant to their role in the organization. We have outlined our website that now has information that can be read in two different ways. You can read the PDF version of the document as well as web content. And we received a lot of positive feedback about the guidebook so far. So overall, very positive. People have been excited that it's a great transparent resource and that it helps them to be able to self-serve the information they need at the moment they need it. So that was the, the initial feedback. Phase two is what will begin for the rest of 2024. And phase two of that outreach plan will continue to share updates with internal and external stakeholders to really make sure that people are continuing to use this resource. So drum roll please. Now we get to talk about the really fun part. This is where we get to tell you the good news that with all of the goals that you have set through our climate change policy, strategic direction policy number 15, that we are on track with meeting all of these commitments and goals. So there are two components to the goals that you outlined in SD 15. The first goal is an internal emissions reduction goal. And the second part has to do with a carbon content of our power supply. And that second component, the 95% carbon free by 2030 goal that was included related to our power supply, it's really outside of the scope of tonight's presentation. But we will come back at a future time and talk about that. That is being managed through our integrated resource planning process. So we'll get more into the details on that during those presentations in the future. But we are modeling for meeting those goals as part of that process. So we're on track there. The other two areas that I'm going to be talking about tonight relate to our internal emissions reduction goals as well as the voluntary commitments that we proactively put into Eugene's CAP 2.0. So we'll be giving update on that. But the spoiler alert is that it's all good news. We're on track with everything. So, um, yeah. All right. So here are some of the results of our internal G She inventory. So here you can see the years at the bottom. That's ranged from 2010, when we started, that's the baseline year for the goals that we were setting. And you can see that we have our scope one and scope two emissions on the chart. You can see that there are, in the first goal that I was mentioning before, there are three components to it. So we had a goal to reduce our scope one and scope two emissions by 25% over our 2010 baseline by 2020. And I'm pleased to share that we have continually met that goal ever since 2014. That's noted on this chart by the dotted black line. The second part of that goal was that we hoped to have a 50% reduction over our 2010 baseline by 2030. And we were able to meet that first back in 2016, then again in 2020. However, in 2020, we expected that some of those emissions reductions were in result of the pandemic. So we expected those to go back up in 2021, which they did. But we're pleased to show that they have continued to drop over the last two years. And this year, we are reporting a 54% emissions reduction over our 2010 baseline. So I've included this slide. You, you may recognize it from past presentations. It's a quick reminder that this comes from the greenhouse gas protocol. And it's a quick reminder that GHG accounting is an important and evolving discipline. And EWEB follows all available guidance on how to conduct our GHG inventories. Earlier tonight, you heard about our financial audit and you heard about how in the financial world, there are standards like the generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP. And there are similar standards in GHG accounting. And generally, there are two main types of inventories. So there are inventories that are called community inventories and there are corporate inventories. A community inventory basically goes out into the community, draws a circle around a particular geographic boundary and looks at all of the activities within that geographic boundary from citizen, business and government activities. That's not this, right? This is a corporate inventory. Corporate inventory is designed to draw circle around the activities and actions of a particular entity like EWEB, a business or a government entity. And it illustrates the impacts on the climate resulting from how the organization is being run. And as outlined in those GHG protocols, EWEB takes a financial control approach to our inventory. This means that we include in our inventory all the equipment and assets that we own or have financial control over. And we measure the emissions associated with the fuel consumption or the utilization of those assets. So GHG inventory protocols recommend including as mandatory all scope one and scope two emission sources for an organization. So as you can see on this chart, scope one emissions are considered direct, or you can think of them as owned. Those are the sources that have, that an organization like EWEB has the most responsibility for and control over. Scope two is a special type of indirect or shared set of emissions associated with the consumption of electricity in owned facilities and vehicles. And scope three includes all other types of indirect or shared emissions. And scope three is considered voluntary in most GHG accounting. And I mentioned this just because last year there was some concern about taking credit for emissions reductions associated with the sale of our headquarters facility to the city of Eugene. Just like when we sold that asset, we removed it from our financial balance sheet. It also makes sense and is in alignment with GHG inventory protocols to stop including emissions from that asset here in our carbon accounting as well, based on the date of the sale, which is what we have done in this analysis. The purpose of a corporate inventory is to illuminate the opportunities that EWEB has through its internal operations for efficiency improvements, using less energy, or opportunities to use less GHG intensive fuels or refrigerants. And by consolidating our operations here at the Roosevelt Operations Center, which as you can see from the plaque on the wall is a lead gold facility, we have been able to make strategic efficiency gains. We knew this and planned for this way back in 2009, 2009, when we set our GHG reduction goals that are included in this climate change policy. So I'm happy to answer any questions about GHG protocols during the question and answer session tonight. But I'd like to go through one quick slide for each of the emissions categories in our inventory. So I'm pleased to start with our scope one source from our owned fleet vehicles. And I just have to say, we're so lucky to have Gary Lynch, our fleet manager here. He's a pioneer in this area. He's a great leader. And I just want to call him out as being a specific reason why we can say that we have reduced 66% of our emissions since 2010. That's huge. And that really comes from a reduction in the carbon intensity of the fuels that we use through a switch to renewable fuels. This is primarily being driven by a switch to renewable diesel. But we also utilize ethanol and a small amount of biodiesel as well as we have a few electric vehicles. So our fleet has grown in size, but we've also gotten more, gotten more efficient over that time period as well. When we move on to the next scope one source, natural gas in our owned buildings, we can see that since 2010, emissions have increased by about 68%, but we are recording a decrease of 26% since last year. That decrease, the recent decrease is primarily due to that sale of the headquarters building as well as some reductions here at the Roosevelt Operations Center. Those are our two, only two facilities that we currently, or in the 2023 inventory year that we own that consume natural gas for space. The next scope one source that we have in our inventory are, includes refrigerants or industrial gases, SF6 specifically. And these are emissions that are used in our fleet vehicles, our buildings, and specifically for SF6 in our electrical equipment, switchgear. This can have some leaks over time, but we're pleased to report that in 2023, there were no recharges of those compounds. And so therefore, no fugitive emissions from these gases. Electricity in our owned buildings is a, the emissions associated with that come from two different components. There are the emissions associated with our total electricity consumption as well as, or you look at how much electricity you're consuming as well as the carbon intensity of that electricity. So we're pleased to say that when we just look at the megawatt hours of consumption, that we are down 11% since 2010, since our baseline year. And when we look at where that electricity is being consumed, it's overwhelmingly being dominated by utilization in our water operations. And then when we look at how our emissions factor for the utility specific emissions factor that the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality calculates on our behalf, based on our owned power resources and power contracts, we can see that that emissions intensity is variable each year. So that big spike in the chart on the right, that shows our emissions factor in metric tons per megawatt hour. And then you can see that the chart on the left actually mirrors the shape of that pretty closely. Because how, when our emissions factor changes, it causes our total emissions to change as well. So you can see our total emissions on the left side of that chart. And that spike in 2019 was due to a bad water year in the entire region. So that's why that emissions factor went so high in that particular year. We're pleased to see that has dropped again. All right. So that is our emissions inventory, good news in almost all fronts there. And now I'd like to wrap up with some information about our contributions to the city of Eugene's climate action planning process. In 2020, they released their CAP 2.0. And as part of that process, they reached out to a number of organizations, including EWEB, that they called large lever shareholders. Those were organizations that were, are responsible for big portions of emissions reduction opportunities in the community. big portions of emissions reduction opportunities in the community. And as part of that process, they asked, what are you already up to? What are you already committed to that might have an emissions reduction in our community? And they calculated all of that to see how they were progressing towards their climate recovery ordinance goals. So as part of that process, EWEB contributed fifteen voluntary commitments across three different categories. Five of those commitments were in the transportation sector. Seven were in the building energy sector, and three fell into the resiliency sector. And these were things that we were already planning to do, are part of our mission and are part of our activities. And we were pleased to be able to describe how they helped the community meet their goals. And so on March eleventh, the city of Eugene Sustainability Staff gave an update to council, city council, on how that entire set of commitments that are included in Eugene's CAP two point O are being implemented. If you look at the top chart on this slide, you can see that those are the results that the city represented to the council across all one hundred and fifteen action items across six, five different categories. So transportation, building energy, fugitive emissions, consumption emissions, and resiliency. And they calculated that sixty-one percent of the action items of those hundred and fifteen are actively being implemented. They did that by including two categories, the two green categories. So ongoing programs that have already been started and are running currently, as well as completed projects. Those two total together to give the sixty-one percent implemented. There are other projects, the ones in blue, that have been, have been started, but aren't ongoing project, projects. So they don't have, they will have a completion date, and they're not yet at their completion date. And then the orange row there is ones that have not yet been started. So I'm pleased to show EWEB's results for our fifteen commitments here in the bottom chart. You can see that we have started all of them. There's only one that's still in progress, yet to be completed. And everything else, the other fourteen fall into the either ongoing programs or completed projects. So my last slide tonight is just to leave you with some notes that we are excited to move forward in twenty twenty-four by updating our inventory protocols. You'll notice tonight, one of the things that I did not report on were any emissions associated with our power supply and the scope one sources from our owned power resources, because currently we report that separately to the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality under the G H G reporting program. In the future, we hope to combine all that reporting to be able to show all that in one place. And we are planning to bring suggested updates to our S D fifteen climate change policy by the end of this year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Questions?
Question, I have a question on the, the slide, scope two, electricity in owned building. And you, yeah, and you said that the spike in twenty nineteen was a bad water year. I like that.
Yeah, so that decreases the amount of hydropower that's available in the region. And because that's a low-carbon energy source, it requires that the region rely more on fossil resources. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I thought you were saying that, like, actually, water side.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yes.
So the clarification.
Kind of following off of that, I'm just curious, so I understand that twenty nineteen was the bad water year. I was also wondering how much the, the incidents that we've had, ice storms and such in the winter time, play into that because it affects the whole region? And I just happened to notice, you know, twenty nineteen was a bump. I think we had a big storm in twenty twenty-one. Does that really play into it, or is it really just all about the water side of it? And those kind of, you know, more extreme events that we get are just not enough to?
I mean, in terms of the way this is reported, it's really based on total megawatt hours that are generated from different generating resources and how much of that goes to served load. Really, the main amount of carbon that's included in our Oregon D E Q emissions factor comes from market purchases. And so it's really about our market purchases, as well as the Bonneville Power Administration's market purchases. That's where the majority of the carbon that comes into our emissions inventory. So storms will play into that in certain components, but usually they're short-lived, and it's really looking at the amount of market purchases across the year.
And probably to a lesser degree, we were going offline in late twenty twenty eight, or twenty eighteen. Well, compared to the purchases, but.
Yes. There's a section on here, let me get page two. We had a big spike in refrigerants, and then it kind of just drops off. What, what was going on in twenty twenty-one that we had this huge refrigerant and industrial gas emission? And then now twenty twenty-three, we have none of those.
Yeah, so these gases are variable to measure, right? So the way this works and the methodology that is used is that leaks can happen over time in very small quantities. And usually, you notice that when the leak becomes at a point at which the refrigerant requires a recharge. And so you calculate the, what was lost based on how much was recharged in a particular year. So sometimes these leaks can happen in very, very small quantities over a longer period of time. What happened in twenty twenty-one was that there were two substations that experienced a leak, and that got to the point where we have, actually, since twenty seventeen, if you look at the chart, you can see that overall, except for that twenty twenty-one year, emissions from leaks are much reduced. And we have gone through a process where we invested in new equipment and new training on material handling for S F six specifically in twenty seventeen and beyond. So that has made a difference. But there was a leak that was noted at that particular substation in that year. And so that's the year it was recharged. That particular substation is scheduled for full replacement here in two or three years. So the planning work for the replacement of that substation is already underway.
I was wondering too, I know that we get some from the, I think it's from the transformers. Maybe it's a different, but that was a pretty high rate. And we were switching out the fluid in those, but.
Yeah, these, these are, so when you see the spikes, those are when the S F six gas is being recharged. So it's very likely that the recharging that you saw in twenty twenty-one might have been accumulated leaks in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. It's also safe to assume that twenty twenty-three is not zero. That there, but when we go out and we recharge the S F six, which is a gas that is a spark suppressor, that there will actually be, it would be, you know, you look at this data and you're going to go, oh, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, it wouldn't be unheard of to see some level of recharge that took place. We did between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty-one, change some of our gas handling equipment and protocols. Some of that was because leaks can occur when you're just handling it. And so we wanted to minimize those. But that's when the recharging is taking place, not necessarily when the leaks are happening.
Okay, so this isn't the fuel that's actually inside of the transformers that I thought was being switched out to the more environmentally friendly?
No, it's not transformer oil. This is in specifically, and most of the time in breakers or switchgear, where as it's used as an insulator, basically. That, like I said, when you have, so that you can suppress sparks and make it safer in a smaller amount of space.
Okay, great.
And as a refresher, sulfur hexafluoride is a, also twenty-four thousand times the global warming potential of CO2. So a little bit goes a long way. Like, I think twenty twenty-one was a little over thirty pounds of it. It's a sizable emission. That's why there's effort to swap it out and improve leaks and monitor leaks.
And then I just had one other question on the solar installs that significantly jumped up in twenty twenty-two and twenty-three. And I was just curious if you had any thoughts as to?
In chapter three of that, what?
Climate guidebook?
Yeah. Yeah, I actually don't know what caused that solar installation to go up. I know that, well, actually, it probably was due to a change in our solar incentive. Can you answer that, Frank?
I'd have to look into the specifics of it. These, our solar program is primarily funded through our green power program. And so we'd have to take a look and see if it was part of that.
I was wondering, when we switch to having the four different categories instead of just the one, if that actually had an impact?
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Please, yeah, Frank, sorry.
I was just going to say one thing. Mr. Carlson asked about storm years. One thing that we could look into is that when we're responding to storms, there's a tremendous amount of fleet and vehicle use as part of the restoration. And I don't know if that, if we've looked at the impact of that particular side of it. But that's something that we can potentially look at.
Thanks for the great presentation and the guidebook. I think that there's lots of people, other agencies, and these things. They take a lesson from that because it's somehow prehensive. Couple of questions. One, in chapter two, we were talking about rate designs and the, how rate designs can be incentives and disadvantages to, you know, if the rates are too high, then people don't do things. So we will be looking at that when we start talking about rate design and how that affects not just people afford it, or can the utility afford it? It's also has an effect on our, on our emissions. And then the other question that I have is, when are we going to start talking about scope three and EWEB's impact on areas of scope three? There's all of these, you know, there's direct ones, and everybody's working on their direct ones. But there's this scope three that's on the outside, that's this huge elephant in the room. And if you don't look at it, you know, I mentioned something earlier about, about low-carbon concrete, right? If we're not looking at this stuff that we are contracting through and wiring these people that were spending money to come in and do work for us, to look at this through their lens too, because we don't know that they, they don't have this climate guidebook, and they don't have these goals, but it's a huge part of it. So when are we going to start looking at scope three and saying, how can we bring our scope three emissions down?
We'll answer that in a couple of different ways. We are looking at a couple of areas of our scope three already. So I didn't include it in the presentation today, but we have been looking at especially the impact of our scope three emissions from employee commute as it relates to our dynamic workforce policy and what has happened with the workforce since the pandemic. So that is something that we are already tracking and measuring. We're working with workforce services to collect that data and make some estimates there. Generally, I would say absolutely, you're a hundred spot, a hundred percent spot on that looking at scope three can be helpful to identify, even though we don't own those emissions, we have some shared responsibility for them. And by looking at them, you give an opportunity to figure out where we can still influence them, even if we can hold them outright. So we are doing that in some certain spaces. So like I mentioned, the commute, we also look at our personal vehicle travel. That's included, and we do measure that. So when employees take their personally owned vehicle on behalf of EWEB for business travel and get reimbursement for that, we look at that as well. And then in major projects is where we have taken a big look at our construction emissions. Because all of the, I've probably done sixty-plus greenhouse gas inventories in my life for organizations across the entire region. And scope three can be significant, and most of the time it comes from construction emissions, especially for organizations like EWEB that are responsible for significant construction projects. We have taken the approach of, as you mentioned, last year, when you talked about the green, not as an initiative, we actually have created a task force looking at green concrete. We have joined with the city of Eugene's Green Concrete Task Force. We are studying what the city of Portland is doing on green concrete. And looking at what options are available to us. You've heard earlier tonight from Laura at what options were available for a specific drinking water project. Our concrete usage actually jumped from approximately four to five hundred yards per year for the fortieth project to over ten thousand a year for the last two years. So that specific project was a big driver in that. And we are limited for some of that options with it being a portable source. So we are exploring those things. We are researching those opportunities, and we are engaging with our partners who are looking into this as well.
That's a question that I would have, maybe this would be for Frank, Rod, is when we look at our procurement, when we put a bid out there, right? We see these bids in our consent calendar, and the criteria are, you know, have they done, you know, what's the lowest price? Have they done the work for us before and was it satisfactory? At some point, will we put in there? What, what implements are they having to reduce their greenhouse gases? So if they're, if they do, if it's a construction company, and one of them is using biodiesel, and the other one's not using biodiesel, and there's ten thousand truckloads going to a site, we considering that? And that's kind of what I'm thinking about in some of the areas to look at it in. Scope three, procurement of actual materials is one, but the contracts that we're doing with the other one, that I would hope we can start leaning that way, because it's, it's as big as any of the other ones. Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a real quick follow-up. What I'm saying is that that was one of my concerns about some of these products we're buying, like thousands of dollars on transformers and things, and they're made in China. And some of these products are made in China, some of the biggest violators of change. And we're still, we're feeding that machine, owning all these sulfur coal plants, all that stuff right now. Feeding that machine by buying your products. And when, is it cost effective? Say, we've got to buy something here for a million dollars to buy something from China, so. Is that a threshold? Where do you try and balance that? Because we're about nothing against a lot of rate. And where do we make that decision as a group, or you make that recommendation as staff by telling us that we're going to spend that kind of money to?
Don't have a great answer for you at this moment. We have, there is always opportunity to do a comprehensive review of our procurement policies. And we, last year, you all passed the diversity, equity, inclusion policy as well that could look at certain criteria that we look at in our procurement. We do address any of our procurement goals there. I, that is my.
Well, I, I can sort of address the larger question. I think there's a certain number of stages and steps that we are going to go through when we're looking at procurement. The first one is, is always, does the piece of equipment meet our specifications? Does it, and when I say specification, performance specifications. In some cases, that limits the supply. In some, some cases, it limits where it's manufactured or where it is not. But I think when we look at the fact that we typically deal with assets that have ages in the decades, performance becomes one of the initial criteria. However, I'll say that there's also a second driver here, and that's the various procurement processes we have. There's a difference between certain pieces of equipment where you have to bid, which is basically you have a spec and you go by price, versus other things where you can do an R F P, where you can look at more things beyond just the typical price and, and product. And those are opportunities to start expanding some of the evaluation criteria that we use. And then the third one is really around larger project decisions. And, and, and those where we start to look at the T V L approach. And we did that when we looked at two tanks versus one tank, for example, at East Fortieth, and how many different, how many numbers of truckloads it would save. So I think it's, it's going to be Commissioner Brown, kind of an intentional step-by-step process, to start to expand that in the areas that we can. And that would be. And that would be areas that would typically be things that would be not just a bid price situation, but something that is more along the lines of a best proposal.
Thank you for the presentation. This is remarkable. I imagine that how EWEB purpose was being to have stop shop for all this information is really down to our other utilities putting forth the section on breadth and some description of all the things that are going to be to this emissions and so operations. Anyway, thank you for the, the work we did together. It's remarkable. I, I guess I'll pick up on the scope three thread. I too am interested in seeing us reporting, even if it's not complete, and seeing us reporting scope three emissions from the biggest pieces. I'm pretty sure where those are, right? Steel, already reporting refrigerants, auto, I don't know what the other ones are, but you do. So even if we just started reporting the ones that we're already counting, I think that would be valuable just to give us a sense of like, how big are these? You know, and where, which direction are they moving? I think that'd be valuable. In terms of, of cost, I know that it's not only like buying a substitute that's more expensive, but sometimes it's really buying something that's more durable so it lasts longer so we don't have to buy it as frequently. And that can save us money, buying recycled metals instead of raw metals. Sure, we buy a lot of metal. Buying less of something by changing our design. Laura talked about changing the pillar design. So there are things we can do that save us money and reduce emissions. And there's opportunities there that I'm grateful we're paying attention to. I have every confidence that the organization is paying attention to. And I think by reporting those things in interventions of this, it helps demonstrate for our partners and our customers what steps we're taking, if that's valuable. So, and then in terms of procurement, I agree with you completely, John, that there are opportunities for us just to start asking our providers a piece for into where are you currently swapping out fuels? If it's as straightforward as it appears to be, we can encourage our contractors to do the same by just asking them or incentivizing them through our season. I do have a question and you already touched on it. The scope one emissions from our, our own generation that in the greenhouse gas inventory here. I'm curious a little bit about why we're not reporting them here. I understand we're reporting them to DEQ, but it doesn't seem like it's duplicative for us to also report them here. Is there, is there a reason that it doesn't make sense for it to be included in our scope one emissions?
It's a great question. It's something we're working to resolve in 2024. That's the next step. We are hoping to follow the Climate Registry's Electric Power Sector Protocol that includes comprehensive reporting on all of those emissions in one. We have been doing this the way we've been doing it for the last 10 years because of the way the goals were. So there is a goal specifically about our power supply and that's separate. And there are these goals that were specifically developed around this set of emissions. And so we're reporting based on the way the goals were written in ST 15. So that is the reason for the split in this particular way. But like I said, in this next year, we have plans to follow the Electric Power Sector Protocol to have a comprehensive set of reporting.
So the scope one and two greenhouse gas emissions reductions targets that we have specifically exclude, the targets exclude provisions from home generation? I would say, I mean, I, I know we have a target specifically about what we're going to buy. But yes, so.
So the, the original goals were around what we're consuming, now what we're generating. So the electric sector, so and that's the DEQ part is also what we report to DEQ is based on the consumption within our service territory. So it's all based on the consumption side, not on the generation side. We know that we generate more than we consume and that extra piece is not captured. So it's, what we report to the DEQ will be different than the electric sector protocol that, that Kelly mentioned. And it will likely be worse from a carbon intensity perspective. You can't cherry pick which ones you decide that you want to take to load and go, oh, we're going to take the, the green electrons and we're going to ship the brown electrons somewhere else. And so the Electric Power Sector Protocol, it's, it's a different standard. We can't get away from reporting to DEQ what our service territory consumes, including ourselves, which is the number that we use and we provide links for. But this will give us a little bit broader picture as to what we are actually responsible for generating. If that, if that helps.
Yeah, I think so. And if we were to stack that against our, the existing scope one and scope two emissions, is it big, is it small? Do you have a sense for how much that if we stacked them, which that's not, that's not double counting if we do that. Right? If we stack those emissions and just, is it, I'm just curious how, what is the sense of scale?
That's part of what doing this inventory exercise will inform us, right? So I don't want to project on that right this second because I, they're reported in different units. So overall, we have very clean grid mix, right? And the resources that we own are very clean, right? We own hydroelectric dams, we own biomass, you know, power from our, our contracted power and our own resources. So it's very clean, very renewable. So I don't expect it to be very significant, but it's reported in very different units. And so what we're hoping to do in the next year is bring it all into one report so that everybody can see the sense of scale of all of those sources together. And we can look at what are, you know, again, back to the purpose of why we do these kinds of analyses. We try and figure out where do we have control and influence? And what can we do to make the world a cleaner, more climate resilient world, right? Where can we pull levers? And so that's where we're trying to figure out where we can have power or have, have control and influence on the resources that we're procuring. And that is addressed in both of those goals that are in ST 15, they're just separated right now.
And President McCray just, just agrees the skids a little bit. Depending on the outcome of what we're finding, we may come back to the board with some recommended changes to ST 15 specifically around the generation side of what we're doing. We, we have some of the same questions that you do. But we want to have a targeting policy that actually makes sense from a what are we controlling perspective? We're controlling our entire resource, not just what we consume. And so once we understand the scale of that, we, we may come back to the board and work on a new target.
Back to the scope three emissions that you were mentioning before, I just want to say that we do. And as a matter of course, is, is part of our policy as well, ST 15 that says we'll do a triple bottom line approach on all major projects. So we do that. It's usually reported per project and that's not consolidated here. But you remember that that was included and there was a GHG portion of the LIBER triple bottom line. There was an analysis done at the 40th Water Project and looked at the GHG emissions associated with the construction there. So those things are being looked at, it's just in a different format. Where we can actually make the most effort. Usually by the time you're doing an annual inventory and look at construction emissions from that perspective, it's usually too late to influence a particular project. So the timing makes the most sense from when EWEB can actually analyze those emission potential and, and take action in design, like Laura was talking about earlier tonight.
Right. Yeah. And to me, that's one of the reasons to report the scope three is that we, I think we can demonstrate that, you know, the changes, that just that, that as a team, this group is already looking at emissions and making reductions along the way. And that could be reflected in a, in an annual report. So yeah, I'm, I'm, John, I'm eager to see that included and throw over the work that y'all are doing right now. I guess that's just, I know you're already doing it. And I think we should share it with partners who frankly, oftentimes are a little reluctant to wade into trying to address scope three needs. And we're doing it, we should reflect it as much as we can. Yeah.
Please, there's one other point, President McCray, and this is another one of those just forewarning pieces is that, and I specifically mention this because Adam is sitting at the table. We did include our rate design principles, rate, or rate making principles, but we have a significant amount of rate design work to do over the next couple of years. And so all of those are going to be reexamined with the board. Everything from how much do we want to be cost based versus how much do we want to be behavior based? I mean, as we're talking about really fundamental decisions. And so while it's in there, the, the next versions, we would anticipate to evolve quite a bit over the next couple of years.
Yeah. And on the rate design, I was looking through that particular piece and I appreciate you including me in here and the rigor that somebody went through to go look at the different seasons and compare them and take that into our rate design principles, that was work. So thank you for doing that and sharing that work with us.
And in case anybody's curious, the reason it's included in the climate guidebook is that there is a direct connection to keeping rates low. That is climate action, right? We help people to be able to transition to an electric future when rates are low. That's the connection.
Thanks. Anything else? Thank you very much. All right, moving on to our next item, the ice storm after action report.
Good evening, President McCray, Commissioners, General Manager Lawson. Tonight has been all about continuous improvement, reporting on activities and getting feedback and making adjustments. And this is yet another one of those for us. So we're here tonight to talk about the big freeze, the storm that we went through in January. You were given a report in February from General Manager Lawson. So tonight we're going to focus more on what have we learned? What were the lessons learned? We're going to give you a brief recap. Then we'll have time for a Q and A. But after that, we've got Brian up here with us who's going to talk about storm impacts to the region and what that means to EWEB. So for the record, I'm Karen Kelly. I'm Chief Operations Officer and with me tonight is Tyler Nice, Electric Operations Manager, and Brian Booth, our Chief Energy Resource Officer. So with that, this slide has a lot of words on it and our intention here is just to call out some highlights. So we'll start with Tyler.
Yeah, sure. So when thinking about the, the big freeze, the 2024 ice storm, I myself think about it about double of anything we've experienced winter wise in the past. So the numbers kind of speak to that in the, in the ice storm after action report. There's a comparison between them, but you know, some of the highlights that stick out to me are the 38,000 number. That's something that haven't seen before, a lot of, and already of our staff have. The amount of time in ICS was 17 days, which means we actually stood up ICS, which is one good thing we did the week before the event and just prepped and made sure consumables were ready and that sort of thing. But that, that's a long time to be working 16 to 20 hour days. Also, the staffing part of it, over half of our organization was invested in this for that period of time. Again, when do you get an organization this size? All headed in one direction for the community. And, and the money part of $8 million, that does not include a couple of transmission lines that we were kind of gifted capital projects out of this that we're still working on right now. But, but that's the number of the repairs that we experienced. The other thing that's really a first for us and, and something that we learned from and feel like we rose to the occasion was the column of other service impacts. This is the first event that, that we did, the whole event in a full ICS for every division that was involved. So in the past, we've had events where, you know, maybe we had a little bit of communications issues or, you know, maybe carbon tripped off and things like that. Pretty much each one of these divisions experienced severe disruptions that you can see on there. And really that resulted in, in us having one ICS and, and able to come together for that. We hadn't experienced that widespread before. Well, I think Karen is going to talk about the customer side.
Yeah, I just had, like Tyler said, we had impacts across the board. It was not just electric transmission distribution yard. We were having people trying to avert disasters in other ways. So water, for example, running the plant for the first time on backup generators at a reduced capacity, that could have easily become a much more serious event. And same with generation, we had folks making sure that we didn't have any kind of damn safety issues while we're operating with no power and no communications. So I think it's just critical to, to point out that we averted many disasters with, with the work that we do in planning and preparing and exercising for these events. So wanted to call that out. Same thing with communications group and the work that they had to do with rerouting homes in order to keep equipment moving and working. But with our customer side of things, you know, you can see here the inbound calls 25,000 during this event, trying to keep their response at, at a high level at 30 to 70 seconds answer time. I know there was a snafu with the phone system and thankful to commissioners for helping us identify that and running that down. But by and large, we really did have our folks rise to the occasion here in every aspect of our operations. And you can see the work that was done proactively to try and communicate with the community with website hits, with social media, with even the likes. I, I'm surprised at a 71% likes, which is crazy. They don't have a dislike button on the social media. But I, overall, I just want to say, you know, EWEB, we responded with an appropriate sense of urgency and importance without panic. And I think you've probably heard Frank say that before, but it's, it's really a critical piece to being able to manage an event like this.
Thanks to Caleb and Audrey in our GIS group that put this, this video together. I've found it's really good just to reflect on your own story through this. And that, that's one theme I have through this is everybody gets a different story through a storm like this. Some people might have seen a flicker and couldn't get to school for a day or something or work. And some people experienced a several day outage. They, they kind of learned a lesson in their own resiliency and planning they needed to amp up on for the next one. And some people, this is going to be something their family talks about for generations possibly, that experienced some really devastating, you know, either at their home or their property and really changed a way of life. So whatever your story is, I know one thing being IC for most of this event, I got to hear a lot of stories, especially from crews. Also got out about every other day throughout the event, especially after we were rolling, got to talk to a lot of customers. But one thing noting for the staff, which was of course my main exposure here and hearing around, this is the first widespread event in the whole southern part of the Land Valley that I would say, you know, I'll say everybody I had talked to had some story involved. And some of the, the field folks and folks that were here in the office as well would leave in the dark and go home in the dark after working. And some of them didn't see, I know one, one of our staff didn't see the tree on their shop until the last day when we were cut out early and knew, knew what their new project was. They were going to do the spring. So stuff like that, the dedication, I think, really came through. I think also the, the piece about the, the customers being really thankful out there, both online, but especially in person when we're out and about. So the people side of that through these, these dots is the real part that hits me. And the priorities, kind of the, the outcomes we have here, the, the hot wash process and the hot wash is a technical term in the FEMA books, really we, we wash down and see all the gritty details that we need to improve on. What we do is we meet, we assign out each section chief, which is logistics, operations, planning, the IC and all these different departments. They all get with their teams, meet and go through all the things that worked well and didn't work well. Then we all meet together and put that all together as a big list and discuss it. We also meet with other agencies that were involved, county and city, and participate in theirs. And then you can imagine we end up with hundreds of lines of to dos on a sheet that we need to prioritize. And so I'm obsessed with threes because it helps me stay honest and not forget things. But these are kind of the three main categories, both areas of emphasis, emphasize are kind of the things we are doing and want to do more of an opportunity improvement that we want to start doing. I think you were going to talk about the emphasized ones.
Yeah. So those things that we want to keep doing take resources. So I wanted to mention them here because you'll likely have questions about how we follow up to these action items and, you know, eventually more consent items possibly. You know, the list could go on. So, so the first one here is to continue our annual. could go on. So, so the first one here is to continue our annual ICS role specific training. So keeping our staff up to date, making sure we have more than, you know, one. And in most cases, we try to stay three deep in knowledge and experience in each role. So keeping that going is important to us. Also, Tyler mentioned earlier, the pre-storm stockup that is done and making sure that we have the appropriate materials on hand for things that would likely impact us the most. So that takes money and resources as well. And then policy driven support and resource allocation for training and response activities. So continuous improvement efforts. And, and like I said, that may, they may come to the board at some point where we ask for additional help with this.
The opportunities for improvement. As Karen said, we always have a goal on our rosters of three deep. This event taught us that in many of our roles, when we have a lot of employees that can't get in, you know, we had people that lived up river or elsewhere that, that had pickup sticks across their whole long driveway and couldn't get in. Those three deeps turned to one or zero pretty quick. So we'll, we'll need to be bolstering some of that staff, you know, even at the chief and the lead level and, and all the way down really. So that's when we're going to be expanding our training. And I think one thing going for us is, you know, last year, putting in the resiliency policy and then, you know, putting in our, our emergency management office, those are really building blocks that are going to allow us to, I, I would consider us have been in the past scrappy on our ICS procedures and really serious about it, but kind of bootstraps on it. And now we have the basis from the organization to kind of be more formalized and disciplined. The update and refined assessment and restoration processes, everybody wants to know when they're going to be on, even when there's 38,000 widgets to figure out. And it's, it's, it's slightly impossible to do so. But what, what we do have an opportunity on this one is looking from how we plan the work and restore the work and how we report the work. That's a, a project we're going to be undertaking with the operations and planning. We also have some opportunities with the estimated time of restoration was, I'm sure everybody knows what ETOR means now, if you didn't before. We do have a couple of system upgrades coming, both as part of the EES project, but GIS upgrades that, that will be looking to leverage. And so, so those things, again, the basis is there and we need to do the work, but that's, that's definitely a main emphasis, the public, the public side of it. The things that, that we also experienced on that category where we did have problems with our outage map in the middle of it that were remedied, because we did have IT staff stood up in the middle of events. So that was three. And then our phone system and the text feature was inoperable during the event. And that is another project where the GIS or IT department is, is afoot to, to get a new vendor for that. Practicing discipline and using ICS forums. So that's kind of the moving from, you know, we're using ICS to we're fully committed to ICS. So we did, we did discover that in an event this size, things like the check in and out of staff for safety and, and control of resources and just wellness is important and also for FEMA reporting. So those are some of the major things. We also, some of the things we're working on in the background is around, you know, tree related issues with comms facilities. That's kind of something that comes up in these and also in our daily work. We're partnering with the city on some things. And we're also doing some assessment on that for, for parts in the right of way we don't control. And then also, big thank you to our mutual aid crews out there that, that came to the call. They were ones that we had on contract already, some of them. And also BPA deserves a shout out. They really did some bending over backwards to get a river transmission in that Brian will talk about some of the impacts, but they helped us mitigate a little bit of that by getting us on a few days earlier than we would have. So all in all, you know, whatever your story was as part of this, we think the story is we have a, you know, a lot of opportunity. We learned a lot, but we also have, it's, it's looking up from here and saying, also for the, a big thank you for Robin and Claire in the PR department. They, they put together with help from all the chiefs, the data for the after action report. And just really appreciated that. And this logo here, you're going to see on a T-shirt at some point likely. It's put together by some of our line crew members. You can see the refund of, of some of our Sasquatch in the Northwest and, and some of our equipment we use. So.
So with that, we want to invite your questions and just want to also, it's a common theme for me, but appreciate all of your support during the event. I know I went out in the field with several of you and, you know, having, having you show interest to the crews was really important to them. We got a lot of feedback about that. Some of them were a little embarrassed that we showed up and they were on their break instead, instead of in action. But, but they did appreciate that and we appreciate it. Thanks to everybody who's involved in this effort. So with that, some Q and A, and then we'll hand it over to Brian.
Well, I'm thankful that when I went out, I didn't see anybody who looked like that had their front teeth. All of the lines were absolutely wonderful when we saw them embarrassed or had been worried. I mean, I was just, they were working, you know, 16 hour days and they were all smiling. You know, when we came through here, people were just so dedicated and getting, you know, getting people back to restoration. Just really appreciate that. Such a good camaraderie and teamwork to support.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah, a question and then a comment. Number one, we saw the concrete pole that failed. Is that a concern of us? Because you usually, you know, wood fails, but concrete, when those things just shattered, is that something that we should be? Because they're, they're carrying like on COVID road and all the, the repairs, the arterials, they carry some big heavy lines. Do we need to be concerned about that in the future? Or was that just a anomaly?
Love to say it's a phenomenon, but we will be investigating that more, you know, the, the design side of it. And, but yeah, you're, you're right. That's, that's one, another gift that we got is to assess that some more. And we've done lots of studies with that in the past with the seismic aspects and kind of were in the clear on that. So that was something we will be looking at.
One of the things that the failure mechanisms on those concrete poles was the insulators. And the last three or four years, maybe it's more than that now, they've been going through and be insulating the, the concrete. So obviously didn't happen out that day. And that is an unknown thing. And so it is slowly being chipped out. So there's also a continuous inspection program. And then could you go back to the slide that shows the outages? Go back and you show the, where it was.
This was the stats, you mean?
Yeah, the stats. I mean, I, it's hard for me to go ahead and know, not, not that one, the, the map that shows red and green, right? And, and, and populated.
As you can see, this was the first couple nights. And then when it all turns red is that second.
So is it, is it true that, I mean, Sony didn't have an outage? I had the majority of them.
Yeah, you're lucky on that one.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, sorry, like I said, absolutely won. North, north of 105, south of Beltline, east of Delta and west of I-5. That's my area. I just got absolutely, absolutely hammered. So does that mean that our particular area, the constituents that I represent are going to get more tree trimming because it's an older neighborhood? And there's a lot of more mature trees? Or is that just because of a system failure? Because I mean, you look at that outage map, and you look at West Eugene, Beltline, and Bethel and that area, there's no outages. And you look at my particular area, and I took, had to take my phone off the hook for a couple of days. And because they, you know, rightfully upset, wanted to wind, that we had a majority of the outages in that area. And that's not hilly, that's all flat. So are we going to get tree trimming or what's going to happen?
Tree trimming is, is one part of it. But anecdotally, I'll say the ice was wildly different based on where you went. So some places had maybe big clear ice, some snowy ice, some just a little dusting. And, you know, the places you're seeing as you, as you went east, it turned from kind of, we had a snow cone, it felt like in town. And as you went up river, it was more like a solid ice cube. But depending on where you were, the pockets were very different. It was, it was odd.
I just wanted to tell them to be prepared for more tree trimming or something like that. We're going to have some meetings with the neighborhood groups here coming up. So thank you very much.
The ice was, I mean, I went from my house over there to Brine in Springfield, which this map doesn't show because we don't service Springfield. But I was blown away by how thick the ice was in this region versus where I live at. Because I mean, it was like a solid inch and a half ice skating rink at Brine.
That's totally not fair. I'm going to start calling you with, get outage. I mean, you didn't have an outage.
Next time the ice could be over there and it might be nice.
She gets it next time.
I was just going to move in with you.
South, Crestwell, Crestwell got hammered. Oh, yeah. So it was.
So I have a question about how, it's one thing for us to be prepared, but ICS, all that, that's really great. And the thing that will make it just that much easier is customers are prepared, right? So I know we have a lot of positive negative actions, but I heard from unhappy people, especially upriver, kind of, they've been working a long time, their power was stored. And I feel like overall, if people were prepared, it wouldn't be, I mean, it would still be terrible to have the power out for so long, but it wouldn't be as devastating. And so I'm just wondering how, how we do that if you, as a team, maybe it's not your, you're, you do that, but.
Yeah, two items that were actually in the notes that I realized I forgot were around, you know, distributing water jugs. That's one thing we did ad hoc during the event that we're going to put in our plans. The other one is promoting the generator programs more that, that we're kind of had a, you know, last couple of years, a wildfire PSP spin on it that, that really could be applicable to anyone, especially in this event, you know, generators are hot commodity when that happens. So yeah, def- definitely people preparing their own house for, for this kind of event is going to be key, depending on the scope of it. And like I was mentioning before, some of the gifts we got out of that with the transmission damage that we hadn't experienced before that resulted in some of that, you heard us hammering on hierarchy of repair, why we couldn't get a river because we didn't have any power up there. One of the reasons why unprecedented Hayden Bridge was offline on their own emergency generator for a while. So yeah, you're, you're hitting on, on a very important point, Republic.
And then another part of that also is, I had been, I forwarded this on, but I'd been contacted by a local supermarket that had a lot of questions during the outage. They didn't have adequate generators, I don't think. But then they also didn't get the right information that they needed from their electrician. We didn't get in touch with E-Web. And so they're not one of our large customers. Again, like another area of outreach for businesses that aren't like medium-ish businesses, but that also kind of, so like, just function like, what, you know, and think about that. But again, just hoping all kinds of people cared. And then I do think about the water, like if that water had gone off, I feel like probably most people would have been prepared. Well, and no one's thinking about water in an ice storm, right? They're thinking about power. So it would have been, definitely could have been going worse.
Definitely tout our pledge to prepare program. And, you know, on the water front, that would have been a situation where we'd have to enact our emergency well. And we do have generators at those locations. So just getting, getting there in the ice, that would be definitely a difficulty. But if you had, if you did follow the pledge to prepare, you would set for that. Even if you didn't, within a few days, that's where you could have had those up running.
Yeah, again, for great things for. You know, I saw that the last slide was what, Ice Storm 2024. Need something that is more catchy than that. It was snow again, right? So the big freeze was the one. I mean, this was twice as bad as anything else could be. Ice, ice baby, you know?
Throw around.
Isotopia or something like that. But anyways, one of the things that.
Punchy.
It is, it is almost afternoon. So we can leave it. One of the things that I saw in the report, you know, is like, we need to make sure that we have enough ramp ups and all this type of thing. One of the things that Frank mentioned in an earlier meeting was de-icer and figuring out a way, one, to have de-icer for our vehicles, you know, like, and also, I mean, do we keep salt for the, for the parking lot and that type of thing is, is, is that.
Yeah, facilities goes into overdrive, getting this, this area prepped for people going in and out.
Yeah. Cause I mean, I know that that was something we all dealt with. You couldn't get into your vehicles, employees and work vehicles and stuff. So get one of those big trucks like they have at the airport or Missouri and spray them all down. Other than that though, I think it, it's great. What we can do and learn from it. I think everybody did a great job.
I guess same for me. Impressed by the response, really impressed by the work that you've done to kind of catalog the things that we're going to focus on for next time. And it's really in an adjustable format. And the commitment to getting ICS, you know, locked in, having worked in ice incident command system before, it can be really clunky when you're just starting it up. But when you use a bunch, right? It gets easier. But it also makes it so much easier for us to get recover federal reimbursement for all that $8 million plus expense. So thank you for doing that. Cause it's going to make it easier for us to get some of that money back. I know, I think there's a residential declaration coming for this storm. So we should see some reimbursement for recording, except by fingers crossed. Anyway, thanks for the work. Much appreciated.
We'll say the work is tailing down in operations, but we still have people with temporary repairs, but we're cranking up for our finance friends. So I'm going to be the front. So.
Well, I've got great news. We're overtime. And this, this is the last presentation. And I'm going to stand up. Make it a little bit more interesting to do my meteorologist impression. It's just about the weather. So I've gone through about 200 slides of regional presentations and boiled it down to six favorite ones to go over what was going on with the Northwest during the bigger event. On the left, we have average temperatures from January 14th. That's the deviation from the norm. So relatively balmy in the desert southwest and cold pretty much everywhere else. What you will notice though, mention this a little later, is that Eugene was actually kind of average relative to everybody else. So while it was very icy here, and it was not warm by any means, it was not freakishly cold. We'll, we'll do a little bit more detail on that later. On the right, we have average energy flows in the Southwest, really providing the bulk of the first day during the same period, about 5,000 megawatts of exports, which flowed through-ish California, which set up about 700 megawatts on the way through. Large imports going across the interstate and then up through Idaho as well. Looking at Pacific Northwest total loads, we peaked out at just about 35 and a half gigawatts there on the 14th. That is the highest load the Northwest has experienced since the, the West Coast power crisis in 2000, back when there was many, many gigawatts of aluminum plants soaking up electricity in the Northwest, along with, you know, so many lumber and paper mills as well. This was a, there was a confluence of bad things that happened in the wholesale power market. It kind of stuck for E-Web and that our local jet got knocked out. But really, the Northwest was in tough shape as well. The Bell One Airtide only has a maximum capacity of 7,900 megawatts. That is three 1,600 megawatt alternating current lines and one 3,100 megawatt DC line. DC line and one of the AC lines were down for maintenance because we knew that in January. And the fourth West, four of the Northwest balancing authorities, all IOUs, investor and utilities, third merchant alerts. That's when they put out the APB that they cannot find enough electricity in the wholesale market. That's going to meet their needs. And at which point they hope that somebody's been holding something that I put them to get to, can help them. The big one here, this is why I got a little scared. The Jackson Prairie gas storage facility in Lewis County, Washington, it is the largest gas storage facility in the Northwest. It suffered an cordless outage on the 3rd. It's ultimately a widespread retailments to generators and industrial customers. When I was alerted of this, I, A, hooked Rod and Communications and said, this stays out, power in the Northwest. And then I went out and started on my generator and filled my water. Well, we're going to lose power in the Northwest. The good news is people will be able to get back online in just a few hours. Things got going again. I will say that during that outage, Things got going again. I will say that during that outage, uh. Generation around the Northwest, they of course could not get natural gas, uh, those that had onsite liquid fuel were burning it. Typically, key fuel oil, uh, and those that were at uh. We were really down to like, whatever is in the tank, uh, was what was keeping the Northwest online. Uh, on the right, I've got flows across the California air tie. Last year, that would have all been gold. Northwest usually exports California to us, to California. Uh, but that's not what happened. Instead, we were bouncing off. Probably thirty-two hundred megawatt that it's, uh, that the two remaining lines had available. So on the left, I've got Eugene actual temperatures that occurred and on the right, uh. We were looking at local regional temperatures uh, that happened this past January. January was pretty average for us, I mean, we get down in this area. Be a degree warmer than average, uh, while really, you know, the Puget Sound area, the even the Portland area were average-ish. Uh, on the left there, I've got Carson, twenty-six year average January temperature in gold. And our twenty twenty-four, uh, the average in that dashed red line. So it was a degree warmer than average. Got two uh, daily averages on there. One is this uh. Served daily average that we saw, where you saw we got down to a pretty cold temperature here. I believe our low is nineteen degrees for a single hour. Yeah, nineteen years old, but. It gets colder and has gotten much colder. You look at the December twenty thirteen, for instance. We had a daily average in the single digits. Uh, if you go back to. December thirteen low was negative nine. Now, now we're talking actual cold, right? That cold temperature of nineteen degrees was roughly one in three annual cold temperature, so pretty average. Uh, while that December one would have been more like a one in thirty. Percentile. All right, this is just the best graph, but after I submitted it, I realized I kind of hated my labels that I put on it, so bear with me as we walk through. Uh, here we've got for the month of January, don't mind me just lurking behind you, Karen, um. We've got all of our generation assets stacked on top of you. To show this is our resource mix that we had. Uh, I've drawn across this in the black line, uh, EWEB's loads, so where our resources exceed loads, we've got. Dark green market sales on top, where our resources are less than those, we've got market purchases in dark blue. All right, so leading up to the cold event, we saw this coming and our sliced generation right here. Uh, that is our share of the bundle system with the vast majority of that storage being a grand cooling, which we all toured a few months ago. Uh, we deliberately ramped down slice production. Leading into the storm, so that way we could save that water for later when we thought we would, you know, we needed. That worked out really well. Our share of the Grand Cooley reservoir was a couple of feet higher than uh, its actual elevation, so. We're all prepared. Uh, the bad news is, uh, once we got into the actual storm. Uh, this blue line, which is all of our EWEB owned generating assets, uh, they dropped off to zero. Some of their bad labels says loss of service to IP, that should also say and loss of IP generator and loss of. Kermin and Walterville. Um, so then that blue line dropped to zero and the market purchases wrapped up. It was. Really expensive, worth a thousand bucks a megawatt hour for several days in a row. Over this period, uh, those outages um, added up to four and a half million bucks, something like that. And uh, lost revenue. Market value, we were buying rather than being able to. This is a silver lining on very, very gray cloud. Uh, the second wave of the ice storm. Really knocked out service to the majority of our load, so. While everybody was out of power, at least it was easier on the trade desk cuz uh, they didn't need to buy so much. Searching for silver lining. Just wondering this somewhere. Um, yeah, uh, all our generation got back on, uh. Of course, right about the time we uh, didn't really need it anymore, so then we started selling into market again. And um. Yeah, that's where we landed. Uh, EWEB's merchant operation was well positioned going into the cold, we really did a lot of things right. But uh, well, the best laid plan for mice and traders often go around. Uh, we had a confluence of really negative things that happened to both the Northwest from a power supply standpoint, and then of course. EWEB directly with all of our local jet getting knocked out of line. That is a power picture from my cell phone of the uh, one of the team line laying on the trucks out at IP. I I will say, I confirmed with my father who worked for warehouse remake in the seventies, the red trucks are water trucks, if not fuel trucks. Uh, second big takeaway, uh, regional power supply reliability. Is a concern. Um, and the challenges that we observed in January come with even over temperatures like. So back in twenty thirteen, had the Jackson Prairie gas storage not come back online. We likely would have seen that. Other silver lining is that if everybody's lights were already out because of local service being out, you know, what's a rolling blackout really, but um. That would have been an unprecedented failure. All right, so that's what I've got.
Mr. Sunshine.
One quick question, the four point four million, that's not a part of the eight million. All right, because we can get rid of actual costs, but they don't count loss of revenue.
That is correct, uh, I don't believe we've stopped us from asking, looking Deborah's way. Uh, but I have not heard.
Throw it in there.
I have not heard anything about our smart, charming, handsome and benevolent friends that have been offering to reimburse for that.
Market losses are not normally part of it. We can't ask, but.
That rolling blackout, we notify customers that like you get like a text message, kind of an emergency thing, what happens?
That is a great question for uh, one of our operations folks.
We, I I believe we would use every effort we could to notify people as well in advance as as possible. Similar to like our public CT shut off, power shut off, you know. Getting that message out really sensible and in all the channels that we have and. Looking at Jen too, that's I'm sure she 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 has a contingent.
Go ahead.
There's actually two systems, there's an automated system. Which in the case of the gas outage, probably would have kicked in, no notification, so. Each utility has a set of locks that they'll shed automatically without. And there's the voluntary thing, Brian and I were talking about this the other day that. Probably ought to dust off our. Uh, as as Bonneville or or VA would call us and go operate there and say, hey, we need now in two hours uh. Drop blah blah, so we have a list of stations in a way to do that. And that would give us a chance to do some education and some.
There's the mechanics of it, which is what Rod's describing. We have as part of our emergency operations procedures in our control room, the ability to shed certain amounts of load. Uh, through the computer system, the communications is the other piece of this, which. Um, I think Karen's right, there's a number of mechanisms, the PSPS, we also, uh, if you recall, I think it was last summer. Asked for voluntary load reductions from people through communications, so um, there are things that we have practiced. Um, I don't know that it's specific for load shedding events, uh, we were having to apply. Other techniques, um, but there are, it's not uncommon that utilities are prepared for this. Um, and um, we'll have to continue to evolve how we communicate. It's, you know, there's, there's another variable that that was definitely not just the gas side, uh, but the fact that transmission was limited. Um, into the Northwest through California was another piece of it. The other piece that was lucky was that California was very mild and the desert Southwest was mild. There's a, there was a case a few years ago when California and the Northwest were. Were both suffering from from cold weather and that put a strain. Uh, now, at that point, the Northwest was sort of a wash-in power and there was a giant sucking sound out of California. Uh, cuz they were in this, in a similar position that we were, so there's. There's just a lot of vulnerabilities that I think we need to put into our business continuity uh, and risk mitigation. laundry list of things to prepare for, uh, along with pandemics and earthquakes and.
Do we have a general inventory of um, how much our load is just to support like the? Highest level emergency hospitals. First, I mean, I guess all hospitals are gonna be strange, so I guess it's not as much else, but. Still, there are services, there are particular buildings, this building being one of them to keep, you know, operations going. Do we have a general um, inventory of those kind of like high level? First serve and we can direct power to those first and then you kind of, okay, well, the next one drops off. Because we don't have enough energy to provide for X, Y, and Z.
I'll, I'll make a comment from a few years ago, Tyler can maybe elaborate on this a little bit or Rod. Um, we used to keep track, uh, I know for, for example, of our fifth fifty most critical loads. It was hospitals, pump stations, um. Yeah, wastewater, water and wastewater, those types of things. And those top fifty were about twenty-five megawatts roughly of of I'll say consumption. The challenge, though, isn't the bulk, the challenge is how do you isolate those loads? Um, this is where something like um, having smart meters and other devices that could help you isolate and prioritize. Um, your loads in that kind of situation would be helpful. Um, some of those are on dedicated feeders, for example, the wastewater. System is on its own line direct to the substation, that's a little bit different, uh, but it was in that. You know, twenty-five megawatt range, but that's just those fifty, when you start going into the next tier, which is. Things like grocery stores, um, you have senior centers, you have all, all, you know. Other evacuation sites, schools, that starts to add on to that, that's roughly what I remember from a few years ago, and I don't know if Tyler or Rod want to elaborate on you.
Yeah, the, a thing we've done the last three, four years is a series of studies around. You might hear it called Black Start, you might hear it called Islanding uh, with our local generation, and that was a component of that study is. Look at those top fifty and then we even whittled that farther down cuz we don't have that level of load availability. Um, but yeah, that, that's kind of the next step this year is. When we first did that study, went out and actually measured a lot of those loads with power meters to confirm them, worked with customers to understand their. Those, those critical customers, understanding the process, we're due for an uptick, uh, redo of that. And then we're also moving on to kind of the agreement stage with those local generation stations that that have feasibility. Yeah, that's, that's part of the studies we've done.
So that we have demand response, how much do we have that we can kind of turn off and curtail if need in those situations?
We don't have formal demand response yet.
Oh, okay. I thought we had some agreements with larger consumers to.
Mostly voluntary. All voluntary at this point, um, and that's one of the things that we want to be able to talk to uh, the board about, especially. Related to what kind of incentives and pricing structure we would like to have for those people who are willing to participate at that level. But we don't have a. Formal demand response, it would be totally voluntary.
Thanks.
If I can elaborate just a hair on that one, the customer that has the uh. In response right into their contractor's IPs.
Um, I just thought of something on the last presentation, uh. Is communications with their upriver. Customers, you know, that was one of the things that that. And struggles with because one, they lost power, two, they lost cell service, and three, the roads, you couldn't get in and out, um, so. I know we talked about, you know, trying to figure out better ways to get. Communications up there when we're not there, whether it's, you know, getting a hold of, if we got somebody at Lieber. That's there and can get to the, well, you know, invite a store and post something or whatever. Uh, I would just think we've got an up-upriver meeting coming up in May. Maybe that's one of the topics that we have is, you know, how would you guys, how, how did you guys get information? Up there, it's a, it's a tight knit community, you know, just say. You know, how did you find out things and then maybe learn to tap that in, I think that that's something that we could put on the agenda is. As something that we can learn from them up there at that meeting next month.
In radio.
If you ask for, I don't know what their response is gonna be if they didn't get it. I mean, you know. So focus to the Lake County hot wash as well. Communications upriver, uh, we've had a number of people. Working on that. Hey, Bert. Yeah, there's different ways to do things, so that, that's exactly what they're doing, they're reaching out to different creeps upriver and. Janet, her team probably can elaborate more, Jean's working on that with the. What, what, what warrants communication do you? Anything else?
Thank you all for the presentation, I appreciate it. Two more items, future board agendas.
Missioners, I'll be very quick, um, we are overbooked for May relative to subjects, some of those are recurring events. I'll work with um, President McCray and Vice President Barofsky. I would uh, suggest um, moving the um. So annual strategic plan discussion likely from May to June, it's also when we do our capital. Um, planning update, it'll just align a little bit better with also some work I'm doing with the executive team, so that would be one point of relief. But we'll have to work on a few other things. But that, and then we'll find a time to schedule in, sure, the deep dive into. Some of the things you heard here around uh, electricity planning, how does EWEB position itself to? To be an electric utility in the future and what kind of things do we take on and what kind of things don't we take?
Great, thank you. Uh, anything else, board wrap up, items from the board?
Sorry, I'm way out the door.
All right, getting adjourned.